Well, thank you guys for uh being here this evening. Uh this is the work session. And um excuse me, uh the first line of business. Well, first, I would like to open up our uh work session uh with uh moments of um thoughts and then uh expressions. And uh excuse me, with 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 uh thoughts and expressions, uh we know that our uh covid numbers are extremely high um and that um families and um our community at large is 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 uh dealing uh with that. And so I would, I'm I'm just gonna pick on someone to, it's gonna be on the spot, um to say uh a minute or two of um um something that is in in inspirational. So with that, I will, I will go with Leanne.
I knew you were gonna go for me because I didn't have anything prepared. Um. I would say if it's supposed to be something inspirational, the most exciting thing that has happened in twenty twenty one is I got my second covid vaccine today.
Oh, yes.
And I have no side effects, just one of my arm. Um, so I don't, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, awesome sauce. Um, I appreciate that. I will do one more. Um. Ally, what you got?
Oh.
You want to have something good to say?
Um, well, I'm, in another meeting earlier today, I was able to thank Mr. Porter and his staff for putting together this meeting today and for our doctors and public health experts who were participating in it. And this is really helpful for the board. It's, I really appreciate how well Mr. Ford has been able to field all of our questions. Um, I know that we have been inundate inundating the administration with a lot of questions and emails and and I just wanted to say thank you for that. And I appreciate everyone for participating.
Awesome. Thank you. And thank you again to our superintendent and the staff um for um working, um for us working together to get uh our agenda and and being so uh open uh to answer our questions. And I get information uh that we, we have um asked for. Uh our first line of business is uh we have Dr. Rick Barr. Is he on the, is he on?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there you are.
If I could introduce him just for a second, please, and um and then we'll turn it over. Um, we actually have uh shared uh by Ms. Nolan and I, I wanna also welcome our public tonight that are watching, whether it's on Facebook Live or on LRS DTV. Reminder that this all gets replayed over and over and is accessible. Uh so if you found this interesting, please do share it with other community members because I think it will be a very informative uh couple of hours that we get to spend. Um, you know, as I reached out to both of these gentlemen, um who are really um, you know, people that are right there in the mix of of a lot of different things within our community and specifically within their organizations, they were really automatic yeses and um said that they would, they would jump in to support and help. And um I will, I'll say something about each organization so that I don't have to uh do it for both, but with the um, I'll start with the Department of Health and and Joel Tomlinson. If you uh pay attention to the newspaper, in fact, today, he was the one that was quoted. He's kind of a person that's right there with Dr. Romero and Dr. Delahaye. And then there's uh Dr. Tomlinson, who is helping the Department of Health guide through uh the different things, and that's interactions with the school district, with the communities, with the hospitals. Um, and in particular, Dr. Uh Tomlinson has a specific charge to support the youth of this state in terms of this pandemic. And so if you, we really couldn't have found a better person to uh help. He has been readily accessible to us at LRSD when we called and asked uh for support. Dr. Rick Barr is really um the right hand uh to Marcy Dodger. And I do wanna thank Marcy Dodger from Children's Hospital, um who is just time after time, always finds ways to support our district, whether it's in providing apprenticeship programs for career tech students, to uh being a part of our Leadership Academy, to um supporting uh us on an evening like tonight. Uh, Dr. Barr um is um, you know, right in the mix of, you know, you uh, you know, what the impact of this pandemic has within our community as well as within our uh, with our kids in the community. And it's important to understand with both of these gentlemen from a medical side, that, you know, if we, and I've said this clear back from when the pandemic began in March of uh two thousand twenty, that if we have to really understand what's going on in the hospitals to understand what we as a school district may have to think about and do, because the hospitals are critical. If we don't do the right things to support them and be there for them, uh, we're, we're gonna end up causing a bigger problem in our overall society. So hospitals are critical and we've got two great gentlemen to speak to us. So um, you know, these guys got parameters of saying, we need you to deliver about a ten-minute speech and then we wanted uh or a presentation, then we wanted to open it up uh to all of you to be able to ask some questions. We'll start with uh Dr. Rick Barr. And uh, Dr. Barr, we'll turn it over to you. And I know Jeremy is ready to help you with your PowerPoint.
Great, thank you. I I do have a few slides prepared, but what, let me just open up by saying I deeply appreciate the work that you all do as a school board and and highly respect the education system. I've always said that, you know, if I could pick one health intervention that would make the most difference for the health of kids, it's actually education. Um, that that improves health outcomes across the board. Um, Joel Thomason and I have already done a lot of collaboration. We were uh worked together on a task force back in the fall, um developing the uh Ready for Learning Back to School Guide that it was a collaboration between UAMS and Arkansas Children's and the Department of Health and Department of Education. Hopefully that guide was useful as as you all prepared for uh kids going back to in-person learning. So I I I just had a few quick slides and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, again, my talk, I'm a pediatrician and specifically a pediatric critical care physician is my specialty, but I I do a lot of general pediatrics as well. Next slide, Jeremy.
So what is the uh, the, the experience at Arkansas Children's with uh children infected by covid nineteen? So during the pandemic since March, we've had a hundred and eighty-two children who have been admitted to Arkansas Children's here in Little Rock. And then additionally, another fifty-two children admitted Arkansas Children's Northwest who had uh covid nineteen. And um that may seem like a a fairly high number, but it's only about two percent of our total hospital admissions. So we, we um, you know, ad- admit uh um, you know, over ten thousand kids a year to, you know, uh both hospitals. And not all of these uh kids had really had symptoms. Um, um, many of them were just, had to be, were incidentally positive. We test everyone that's coming into the hospital. Many of them are incidentally posi- positive. And we're coming into the hospital for some totally unrelated reason to covid nineteen. And that, I I just make that point to demonstrate that children really don't get acutely ill with covid nineteen respiratory symptoms. We still don't understand exactly why that is, at least enough to require hospitalization. They have very, very mild symptoms from covid nineteen as opposed to adults. Now, we know kids are about fifteen percent uh of our positive tests are kids. They just don't get severe respiratory symptoms. They can develop a, a post-infection um multi-system inflammatory syndrome, which we call covid nineteen MISC. And that can occur uh a month or two after a covid infection. Um, next slide, Jeremy. So that, what are the, what is the covid nineteen MS- MSCI? It's a post-infection multi-system inflammatory system that can affect the heart, kidneys, joints, skin, etc., and can make kids really sick. Um, this is where you've been, been hearing maybe that, you know, somebody that playing sports after a um covid nineteen infection was discovered to have heart problems and have myocarditis or inflammation of the heart. This is what you're hearing about in the press in terms of a um uh inflammatory syndrome. We've seen eighteen children over the past nine months or so that uh, since the start of the pandemic that have had MSCI, some of which have been fairly sick. So thankfully, it is rare, but kids can get sick from this component uh of a covid infection. Next slide. We don't have really good trend data on can kids transmit the infection, um mainly because many children have absolutely no symptoms at all. In, in settings where good contact tracing has been done, children are probably infected by adults in their household, not the reverse. So although we know children can transmit the virus to others, they probably do so much less than adults. Um, what, we don't have any data on children and the new British or South African strains that we know are rapidly spreading and we we presume are here in Arkansas. We presume that they're fair- fairly widespread. But uh, hopefully we'll have more data on that soon. I do wanna touch on some of the non, yeah, um, non-health implications. Um, that, well, these are, these are health-related of the pandemic on children. Um, we know social isolation, mental health issues uh are are really um exacerbated by any stress, and we know that those have increased during the pandemic. We're seeing more episodes of child maltreatment and child abuse uh presenting to the children's hospitals. So we know that has gone up during the pandemic. Food insecurity is clear and 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 I'm thankful that our school system is is one of the responses to food insecurity and and being able to deliver um meals to kids. Um, we know that remote learning challenges exist and, you know, r- remote learning is not equal across all uh um all environments. So that, I I know that's something that you all struggle with. And, you know, access to other services, such as school nurses or other, other services provided at school are a challenge during remote learning. All these are exacerbated by poverty. We know that uh kids in poverty, you know, you just multiply the uh issues uh listed above. Next slide. And finally, I wanna make a um short comments about the covid nineteen vaccine. It is very effective. Every vaccine that's been approved has shown to be ninety-five percent effective or gra- or greater. We know there's a slow rollout and um, you know, we would like to see as much as anyone that uh we get more vaccine out uh, you know, to those people that need it. I would note that the vaccines are not approved. They were not tested in children less than sixteen. So the vaccine trials in children are just starting. It'll be a while before we uh have a vaccine that's approved for use in children. And if you want some great information about the vaccine, I included the link to a um YouTube video prepared by Dr. Jessica Snowden, who's our um lead of pediatric infectious disease here and an expert on, on, on covid. And and she's, has a great, it's an eight-minute video. It's well worth your time to watch um about the covid vaccine that answers a lot of questions. That's uh, that, that's my short slide presentation. I'd be happy to, you know, when, when Mike uh says it's appropriate to answer any questions you all have. But I really appreciate the opportunity to come and and chat with you all.
Ms. Hatter, if it would be okay with you, it might be good just to have uh Dr. Tomlinson follow right behind and share his comments and then the questions could be kinda shared between us, if that's okay?
Sure, that's, that's fine. That was my line of thinking too. That's how I thought it would go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Tomlinson, we'll turn it to you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Uh, I'm Joel Tomlinson. Um, can y'all hear me okay with this mask on? Okay, good. Um, I am a family physician by training. Um, and when um when Dr. Um Porter said that I have a special role with um children in this pandemic, um, one of my jobs here at the uh Department of Health is as the medical director for child and adolescent health. Um, the other part of the health department I work in is in outbreak response. Um, so uh most of it has been outbreak response uh since the pandemic started. However, um, the areas that I'm involved in specifically with Department Health's um response in this pandemic are specifically with schools, also with um childcare, uh working with DHS. And um, and I'm involved in sports, mainly in those sports that have to do with uh schools and and children. So um, that is, is some of my overview of my role here um right now. I just wanted to give you a little background about uh how, what were we thinking about when we started uh planning for schools going back into classes a- after the summer? Um, in trying to think about what we needed to do to help schools respond, Dr. Barr already mentioned um the work that was done as a collaboration uh with UAMS and Children's Hospital and other uh people in the community and the Department of Health and Department of Education to put out guidance, but specifically in um in trying to get ready for how schools would respond to individual cases, what would they do uh when they had cases? Because it was going to happen. There were going to be exposures at schools and how would uh, how would they be able to handle it? Um, in working with AD, we decided to try and set up what is basically uh kind of an early warning system. Um, we knew that schools, if the students who are positive just went through the normal process uh of getting contacted by a nurse from the Department of Health or one of our vendors, um finding out bit by bit their contacts, then that information go into the contact tracer, uh and then that contact figure, calling one little by little um to the those contacts. We knew that those children, especially if they're young children, they probably are not gonna remember who they're around at school. Uh, they're not gonna know who they're sitting with, who they had close contact with. So trying to set up a system in which the school could, one, um, help provide that information, but two, also know what they needed to do and respond early uh instead of being behind the curve and late. And that's really what it's turned out to be. Now, this system is dependent on a lot of hard work from school districts. And I've been impressed with how school districts, including um Little Rock School District, have adjusted and have uh points of contact. A lot of it is um centered around points of contact. That's the person for each district. Some districts that are big, like Little Rock, have multiple points of contact uh to communicate with uh the Department of Health. We have a hotline room set up with staff from ADH and ADE um that help answer those calls um and take those reports in. And now we've got a um web-based reporting system that the points of contact from school districts report cases that they find out about um to us through that. Because we realized, you know, the first person to find out about a positive test is not the Department of Health. It's hopefully the patient themselves. And then pretty shortly thereafter, uh the parents of that case, if it's a child, or the case themselves, if they're a, a school employee, um, are gonna call the school and let them know. So the school knows before anybody else does, and they needed to know what they needed to do. So that is why we set up kind of that early warning system with the hotline to try and um be able to know, be able to give early advice, intervene early to prevent further exposure and further transmission. Um, so that is kind of the system that we set up. Um, by now, lots of the schools know most of what to do and they, they call us mostly with kind of strange cases, outliers, things that aren't typical. Um, but what did we learn from some of those um interactions with school districts on the system, the points of contact, and as Dr. Four mentioned, consults that we do when a school district as a whole has a question about, okay, we're seeing this, we've got this many cases or this many people in quarantine, uh what should we do? We kinda have a consult like this. And we um, we look, compare numbers and compare notes and then talk about um advice we can give the school district on um what, what plans they have, if those plans that they already thought of um were good and they should go forward, or if they need to tweak them, or some other ideas we might have that they hadn't thought of. I think that's gone well. I, I hope that has been helpful for districts. Um, things I've noticed is that schools are working uh very hard and very diligently in this process. We know that it's and a very heavy lift. This is something that school districts didn't have to consider almost at all uh in, in, in years before. And suddenly, so much of the school year is revolving around um how they've adjusted uh to covid, um much less having POCs that are basically dedicating their full time uh to um tracking covid in schools and how it's going. Um, so schools are working very hard and doing a very good job. Um, one thing we've noticed is lots of the times when a, a school or a district has to transition from normal onsite um instruction to some other change, um whether that's virtual or uh part-virtual, um maybe it's a class, maybe it's a school. A lot of time that decision has not been um due to large-scale spread in the school. It's often due to staff availability. Um, superintendents and principals saying, I just don't have uh enough teachers right now, between a few being out as positive cases, others that got quarantined from exposure to family members, or maybe a coworker um being out um due to quarantine, and they just can't fill it in a way uh that allows them to effectively teach uh onsite. And that has led to a, a large number of the, the, the shifts or the transitions to other uh virtual learning, etc. Um, and I would say one other thing we've seen is that most um, most of the cases in schools um don't contract it at school. Um, most of the cases in schools contracted elsewhere, most notably from their family, which, which makes sense. Um, but also other community activities or or things they're doing outside of school. Uh, where we have seen spread in schools is most often, um, when there is spread in school, it's in a sports team. Um, because it's hard to play basketball, um, it's hard to play some of these sports uh without tolerating close contact. You wouldn't be playing them. Um, you, you, it wouldn't be any form of a normal sport. Uh, and, and that is the, there have been rare occasions where we've seen um in-classroom spread uh from, you know, one person that start and then we get three, maybe four or more uh spread in the classroom. But generally, I mean, that's been a, a handful of cases around the state. And what we've usually seen is if there is a spread in a classroom setting, um that it's maybe from one person to one other person, or maybe two. It's not extensive classroom spread, spread. And that's because schools have taken so many measures, multiple measures at the same time, like masking, like spreading the seats out as far as they can, uh like changing classroom schedules, changing transition schedules, changing the way they do lunch, the way you do pickup of children, busing, um all those things, that hard work they've done based on those suggestions, like in that document Dr. Barr mentioned, um are having uh a good effect on keeping the number of cases of spread in the classroom down. Um, uh, Mr. Owo, Dr. Owo, do we have, can, can we share a screen? Actually, I see it right here. I wanna show you a graph um if I can, and um, and show you this. This graph um shows, compares cases of covid in the Little Rock School District here on the top with all public schools K through twelve here on the bottom. Are y'all able to see that? Okay, so it basically, this gives you, the bottom is the date of illness onset. So when the person got sick. And the case, don't compare numbers to numbers. Obviously, you're one district and this is the whole state. But it's, this is called an epidemiological curve, a curve. What I think is interesting is notice here in the state as a whole, we're kinda rocking along. Uh, cases are going kinda slowly trending up along here. And then right here, we see a jump. What was that jump? That jump was Halloween. Uh, that occurred right after Halloween. And in a lot of schools in the state, they saw a large, a, a significant increase in cases right after Halloween. And you see it jumped up there, and then it kinda started to trend down before jumping up again after Thanksgiving, uh and then it's kinda been high since then. In the Little Rock School District, it, it went, it's trended up a little bit, a little down, but notice there's no huge jump after Halloween. So I, Mr. Porter and staff, I don't know if y'all just did amazing communication to families or the, the families in Little Rock School District were just uh better about not letting uh kids have crazy Halloween parties or what, but you didn't see the same curve. But you can see that since then, along with community rates, uh we're seeing increased trend up, uh just like the rest of the state, just like you see here, but increased trend up since uh November and then here after Thanksgiving and then here through the new year. Um, so I just wanted to show that to y'all. Um, to show that kinda epidemiological curve, that curve that you're seeing with the Little Rock School District, um with the exception of not showing this Halloween jump, that's very similar to the curve in the state as a whole, which is what we've mostly seen with cases um in school districts. They tend to mirror the way uh cases are going in their community. Um, and then um, the other thing I wanted to mention was vaccination plans. Um, I, I saw Ms. Margot Bushmeyer was on there. Um, the phase that we're in right now is Phase One A. Um, as far as a school district is concerned, who's getting vaccinated in, in Phase One A? School nurses and school health staff. Those that are working, that are healthcare workers in the school district um are, are ones getting vaccinated. I know that uh I saw an email that had a lot of the plan that um Ms. Bushmeyer and others in the Little Rock School District uh put together. And I really liked that plan. I thought it was uh really good, the way y'all coordinated it with the local pharmacy um and got appointments set up for your workers to get vaccinated. Um, now, uh when, when will other Little Rock uh School District staff and which ones uh get vaccinated? So um, all school teachers and staff, um, not a distinction, basically anybody that's working on school campus um in education are included in Phase One B. We're hoping to move to Phase One B by the start of February. Maybe a little sooner, but that's the date that we're, we're looking at moving to. Um, and so that is when we hope to start vaccinating uh the groups in Phase B and Phase One B. And uh, school staff is included in those frontline essential workers that are in Phase One B. And so that is uh coming soon. Um, you know, vaccinating the um all the members of the Little Rock School District um staff and is gonna be a challenge simply because I, I believe, Mr. Four, I was, I'm remembering this right, he told me there were thirty-four hundred um staff to be included in that. So that's not an insignificant number of people. But based on the plans that uh I saw Little Rock School District had made um previously for the school nurses and health staff, I, I'm, I am sure that y'all are gonna come up with also a good way to do that uh in conjunction with local pharmacies and those who are providers uh in Phase One B. So I, I think I've probably used up about ten minutes. Um, so I will stop now and um give it back to you, Ms. Hatter, for questions.
Thank you um for, for, for that presentation and that information. Um, I will uh open up the floor for uh questions right from the other um board directors and uh sorry, I'm changing my view so I could see all of you guys. Okay, uh, I thought I saw Director Woods unmuted. Director Woods, do you have something?
Well, I do have some questions. I wasn't uh trying to be eager Beaver and go first or anything. I just, I guess, maybe I just accidentally left my, my thing um unmuted. But I, but I do have some questions. Uh, Dr. Tomlinson, these may uh go for you just based on some of the things you just told us. Um, talking about uh LRSD specifically, are you familiar with LRSD's Ready for Learning Plan? Were you involved at all in helping to craft that? Or have you, have you reviewed it or reviewed it since it was implemented or anything like that?
I have not. Little Rock School District's specific one. Um, I, I did work with the Department of Education on kind of the the framework of Ready for Learning, but that was more kind of the, the statewide uh kinda document and planning. And I don't know, Mr. Four, if, if y'all kinda took that and then modified to make it specific for Little Rock School District.
Well, uh, go ahead, Mr. Four.
Yeah, that is correct. And and um, we, we did uh take our own approach and, and then we worked with uh, we had to get the Ready for Learn Plan adopted or received by the Department of Education who approved it.
But Dr. Tomlinson, even though you weren't involved in the crafting of the uh Ready for Learning Plan for LRSD specifically, have you worked with LRSD over the course of the fall semester when it came to making decisions about classrooms and grade levels and school shifting to all virtual?
Yes, we've had at least a couple of consults that I can recall, you know, formal ones kinda like this, as well as mul- uh, a number of other email communications, phone calls, just uh, instead of the whole crew getting together, just a one-on-one call between a few people. Um, and, and we've, we've done that. And I think those, uh, those calls went well. Um, I have talked with uh Margot Bushmeyer a number of times about things that were going on that she was seeing. Um, finding information from her or, or trying to help with some advice when able.
Okay. I- in working with LRSD, do you believe that LRSD is engaging in the best practices that it can engage in and uh promoting student safety in our buildings? And so I'll leave you that open-ended question, but then I'll open it a little further for you. Is there something, is there any critical review of, of LRSD's practices or policies in your experience with LRSD that the, this new board should be aware of?
Um, what I've seen uh of LRSD's practices and in the interactions What I've seen of LRSD's practices and in the interactions we've had and looking at cases, I don't see anything egregious. A number of the things that I've seen look like very positive things that they put in place. And particularly, I was impressed when, when there was, you know, some sports team issues over cases, how many do we have? I, I liked the response and the cooperation that, that school health staff gave in working with us to try to set up testing. That went really well, I think. And that, that has, you know, that first time helped even future times that have, have gone on since then. So from what I've seen, I think the practice they've implemented have been good.
Okay. Have, have you been involved in the decision-making process to shift schools or districts to all virtual education in other parts of the state?
Um, this is, one second, I'm gonna pause for a second. Director Woods, I'm definitely gonna have Dr. Tomlinson answer that question. And then if you have further questions, we will come back to you. I see a couple have unmuted. But Dr. Tomlinson, please, and you have the floor.
Yeah, that, that, Director Wood, is kind of the purpose of the consult, is when a school is wondering if they need to shift, or they want to, they think they ought to, we have the consult with the different other ADH people that work with me, and ADE people get on the phone with the school district, you know, depending on who they want to be on the call, discuss the numbers, what's going on, what are you seeing, and what's the appropriate response. And so we, we talk about that with them. You know, often it is, this is, the school leader says, this is what we're seeing, you know, what are y'all seeing in your numbers? We compare notes. And, and then they say, this is what we were thinking of doing. Is that reasonable, or do you have other suggestions? And then we, we talk about it and make those decisions. So yes, we've been doing that kind of type of consult regularly.
Okay. Chairman Hatter, I do have a few more questions, but I'm obviously going to defer and let some other people have something to say now and scratch their curiosities. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Director Wood. Director Nolan, I see you have unmuted.
Sure. And I may end up covering some of the same topics that Mr. Wood was also going to ask about. So, one, and this may be for Dr. Varr. MISC, as I understand it, is something that we had not seen before COVID. Is that correct? Is this something new related specifically to COVID? And it's a kind of a two-part question, because my next question is, I have heard from friends who are medical doctors, who are also parents, who have expressed concern about there could be long-term effects that we just don't know yet, that some viruses do manifest with other issues down the road. And so I just wondered, are there, is there research being done, or is there any way to know whether or not MISC is really the only risk that we're seeing to children, or if there are other things that we just may not be aware of yet?
Yeah, both, both are really great, great questions. Yeah, MISC, you know, the constellation of inflammatory symptoms are somewhat unique to COVID, although it really patterns things we've seen before. There's another disease entity called Kawasaki's disease. And we, it's, it's been around for a long time, and it's another inflammatory syndrome that we think follows different viral infections, and has been described for fifty years. And when MISC popped up, we noticed this looks a lot like Kawasaki's disease. So, yes and no, but, but with Kawasaki's, we don't see it affecting, we do see it affecting the heart, but not the kidneys and, you know, some of the other organs. So, MISC, we've certainly seen this with other viral infections. This seems to be more accentuated with COVID. To answer your second question, we don't know the long-term effects of infections on kids or adults. This, this is a novel coronavirus. Now, coronaviruses have been around for a while, and we've seen them in pandemics previously. You know, SARS and MERS were both coronaviruses. And we knew, so we know a lot about coronaviruses. In fact, that's probably why we were able to develop a vaccine so quickly, is we knew already a lot about coronaviruses. And we're just gonna have to, it's, it's hard to tell. We are gonna continue to follow kids, particularly that have had MISC or COVID infections in general for any long-term effects, to see, to see what's there. So we don't have a good answer to that question yet.
Okay, thank you. Well, that, that is an answer, because it is, you know, a concern that I've heard, and it's just, it's something we're gonna have to wait and see as time progresses. The other question I had, I think this is for Dr. Tomlinson, you talked about consulting with districts to potentially switch to virtual learning. Is there a specific set of criteria that are used? And if so, what are those criteria? Or is it something that, you know, a decision is made for each district, and it may not meet, you know, a centralized set of criteria that is applicable across the state?
Yes, Ms. Nolan, it's more like the latter. There's not one specific trigger point. So what, what are the main, the main thing we're looking for is, can we see signs of spread within the school? And if so, how big is it? Because that would obviously, you know, drastically affect our decision. We need to get that extinguished if there is signs of spread in school. Like I said, that hasn't been that common. And by and large, when it's been in a situation like a sports team, et cetera, the schools have already done a good job of, you know, getting those kids quarantined, recommending quarantine, getting them separated so that you don't get ongoing transmission in those. So one thing is, is there spread in the school that we can see? The other consideration taken into effect is, how is it affecting quarantine numbers? Are there enough people from however many cases there were that caused close contacts within the school, such that then it's hard to continue educating, not because there's spread in school, but because maybe enough teachers are out, or enough students are out of the classroom, that it's just hard with half of them gone home, you know, to continue the normal education? You know, in those cases, we look and try to ask questions and find what practices might the school be able to improve on to limit the number of exposures. But generally speaking, when we start asking those questions, there aren't obvious glaring problems with the procedures the schools are using or not doing. Occasionally, there's one or two things that they could improve that we suggest they start doing and changing. And, and that's another thing I think I've seen from the schools is, they've been good at identifying shortcomings and then changing to, so that didn't affect things in the future. Another consideration is the level of community spread, because that will affect, you know, our recommendation, depending on what is going on in the school. But we don't use the level of community spread alone as the only factor in deciding on recommending going virtual or, or coming back.
Yeah, ask why, I mean, I was, I was going to follow up with why not. The reason I'm asking that is, is there an indication that if you have widespread community spread in the community, that you won't also mirror that in the schools? Or is community spread a pretty good indication of where the schools are going?
Yes. As the graph, you know, that I showed you showed, the rising cases in schools tends to mirror the rising cases in the community, because we all live in families, we're out in the community, we're not at school all day long or night. And so that is bound to happen. But, but, you know, and let, you know, the other side of that is, you know, are we, depending on the level of spread, do we want to make a statewide decision to just close schools like last spring, right? And, and that's not been desired by almost anyone, as far as I can tell. Now, some schools, when they're seeing that level of community spread impacting their school in a way that makes it difficult to educate, then we take the, the combination of the community spread with what's going on in the school into account in considering, you know, how to go virtual and for what period of time on that recommendation.
Okay. I'm gonna be very quick. Ms. Hatter, I'll, I'll be very quick. I, I have two more. I, we can skip and come back if we need to do that, but I can get through them pretty quickly if needed. The next one was also for Dr. Tomlinson. And this is something that has been on my mind. I don't know if other school districts are doing it, and so I just wanted to get your thoughts on it. Are there any districts that are doing third-party audits of compliance practices for things like social distancing and mask wearing and things like that? Is that something that the state and the Health Department are doing, or is it something that, for example, a district could partner with, or, you know, the College of Public Health or something like that? If we wanted to make sure that we were implementing those recommendations as well as we possibly could?
Yeah, I don't really know the answer to that as far as third parties, you know, outside of ADH and ADE. We, we have sometimes done that in conjunction with ADE, you know, to, to assess what schools are doing and see if, if there's, you know, any holes in, in what they're doing. But I don't know how to answer about third parties doing it. I, I, I've not heard of that, but I, but I, yeah, I don't have any other information.
Okay. Director Nolan, I'm, I'm gonna pause right there, and I don't see anyone else that have unmuted. So I am going to go back to Director Wood for him to finish his last couple of questions.
I, I tell you what, Chairman Hatter, I really appreciate that. But I would defer back to Director Nolan, just so she can kind of finish her thoughts and ask her question, and then come back to me when she's done. I'm totally fine with that.
All right. Well, thank you, and I will be quick. The reason, just for full, you know, disclosure and transparency, one of the reasons that the third-party audits came to mind is because I have been getting quite a few questions and comments about, well, you know, the reported numbers are X, but I have concerns that they are higher. And so I just was wondering if there were any mechanisms in place to kind of verify or make sure that we were complying as well as possible and reporting as well as possible. So that was what that was about, and we can come back to that with Mr. Poor. The other thing I think I would be remiss if I didn't mention, and, and Dr. Varr, this may be a question for you. We're talking a lot, rightfully so, about the concerns for children, because we're a district, and obviously we serve children. But we also are a very large employer, and we have quite a few adults in the schools. I think has been missing quite a bit from the conversation about the COVID risks to children versus the risks of isolation. So social and emotional health and food insecurity, and very, very real concerns like that. Is the social, not social, but emotional well-being of children when it comes to having a family member, a parent, a grandparent, or potentially a teacher who is critically ill, or potentially they lose a family member from COVID? Is that part of the equation when we're looking at children? Have we really looked very much at, you know, I want to get into the actual risks to the adults and talk about that separately, but while we're still talking about the risks to children, you know, we can't ignore the fact that having so many sick adults and having so many Arcansims die of COVID has got to be impacting children as well. And so is there some part of this that taking care of adults will help us also take care of children? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
No, I, I think it's a great question. I don't think there's a good answer to that. I think every, every major decision like this has what I call a risk-benefit ratio, in that you've got to balance what, you know, there's a risk to, you know, there's a risk to social isolation, and poverty exacerbates that. There's a risk to being in school, and certainly to, you know, all the effects of possible transmission to adults that have comorbid conditions, you know. It, it really comes down to, you know, weighing all those risks and trying to make, what, what are the best decisions for the, the kids in that environment? And there, there are no easy answers. I, it is a really hard question. And yes, children emotionally have, you know, have really struggled through this pandemic through multiple ways, with the stress on their families, with the stress on their learning environment. So it, 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 it's just a tough environment right now. And until we, really, I think, until we get a large number of the population vaccinated, and we can get control of the viral spread, it'll, it'll continue.
Hey, Dr. Varr, I just want to add to your question real quick, or your comment to the question is, you also shared an article with us that we will send to the board, but it's an article that is, deals with, I think, exactly what Director Nolan was bringing up. And you just want to give a quick commercial about that article, and then Dr. Owa will share that in the chat, and then we'll also send it out as an email, and also put it on our website.
Yeah, it's, it's a, you know, I did a little bit of a literature review preparing for this meeting, and talked to our developmental pediatricians here at the Children's Hospital, who are experts in child development, figure out what data was out there on the social and emotional and mental health risks to kids during the pandemic and with, with social isolation. So it, it's a, it's actually a pretty easy read, it's a five to six-page article prepared by the McKinsey Consulting Group on what are the effects, those effects of kids in the pandemic. So, yeah, we'll distribute that, and I would encourage you all to take a look at it. It's, it's a fairly easy read.
Thank you very much. I, I have concerns about the actual health effects for adults, but I'm not sure that this is the correct time to, to dive into that. And it may be more specifically aimed at our administration and talking about how we can address those things. So I think those are all the questions I have at this time. Thank you very much.
And Director Nolan, then we would, depending on timing and placing, then we might be able to address that as well, because it does go along with the COVID conversation. I, I do not see anybody else that, well, Director Johnson, do you have something? I see you unmuted.
Yes, I do. This could be for Dr. Varr or Dr. Tomlinson. We know definitely that we do not have a vaccine for sixteen and under. Is that correct? We will not be vaccinating sixteen and under. Is that correct?
We are, the vaccine's presently not approved for sixteen and under, so we won't be doing that now. We're testing kids right now, so hopefully in the future, I don't know when that will be, Dr. Tomlinson may have a better idea. Yes, we will be vaccinating kids in the future when the FDA approves it for use in children.
Okay, so part two to that question is, should the district and the parents be concerned with bus drivers that have maxed out capacity on their buses? That could be thirty-six to forty-six kids. So we know that there's no social distancing there. So should that be a concern? Is that something we should give some attention to? Either or.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna let Dr. Tomlinson answer that, and in terms of, you know, I'm, I'm always concerned about social distancing, you know, that we know that social distancing, wearing a mask, washing your hands, those, those are key to decreasing transmission of the virus.
So if a bus driver has capacity, they need to, we need to focus on that. Is that correct?
So let me just interrupt real quick before Dr. Tomlinson answers. One of the things that we want to do is try to make sure we have factual information. So one of the things we can prepare for you in a report, if you'll give Mr. Bailey a little bit of time, a day or two, is to show average load on buses. That will help you on this. The second thing is that we also committed this week, this, actually last week, to make sure that all of our contracted services employees will also get the vaccine. That would include the first student bus drivers, that will include the SSC custodial crew, group, that will also include our WILSUB substitutes for teacher positions. They got a survey, I believe today, that lets them go through the same survey that the LRSD staff received, and we will be talking more about that survey later today, but it's, it's out there. So I just want you to know that we are being proactive in supporting those adults as well with virus protection. Dr. Tomlinson?
Director Johnson, I'd say yes. Clearly, we want the students, everyone, to spread out, you know, as much as they're able. So the things that have been recommended are, you know, as much as you can, you know, space out the seats. If there are siblings, seat them together because they're already exposed to each other. And as much separated from others as possible, to try and have assigned seating on the buses because that helps later on if there is someone that was positive on the bus, if they're in an assigned seat. You know who was closest to them and most at risk. And certainly, wearing masks on bus is very important.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those questions. I just have, just to wrap up, because we exceeded our 10 minutes of questions. However, I do have just a clarity question, and this is probably more so for Dr. Tomlinson. This goes, it goes back to being able to switch to virtual learning. And I just want to make sure that I was clear in hearing you. And so there is not a metric or rubric or a targeted, targeted evidence-based data number, data you guys are looking at to determine whether a district is able to switch to going virtual? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, you did. There's not one number of, say, you know, level of community spread that is meaning, oh, you're over this, we think you ought to shut down. Below that, you're completely fine. You know, we have to take the other factors we talked about into account. Likewise, there's not a specific number, you know, like, oh, well, if you've got 10 cases in students in your district, you need to shut down. Because 10 cases in one district might be, that's a lot, you need to shut down. But in the Little Rock School District, that, you know, that would mean virtually hardly any case. So we have to take those data points in a comparison with the district, you know, their enrollment, and in what the situation was. Because if you have, even in a small district, if you've got 10 cases, but they're spread, you know, two in this school, three in that one, four in that one, you know, spread out, it's not as big a deal as if, say, all 10 cases were in the one elementary school in the district, right? So those are the kind of things we're trying to take into account. Is there concentration of the cases and is there sign of spread?
Okay, and my last follow-up is, so if the district, if the Little Rock School District, which is one of the largest school districts in the state or any district in the state, wanted to be proactive and go virtual, what would need to happen? Because too, we know that our numbers are climbing. We know that Pulaski County is one of two of the highest positivity rates, right, in our state. What would need to happen for us to go virtual? Because UAMSS is predicting peaks in the coming months. And then after holidays, we typically see spikes. So is there anything a district is able to do to be proactive instead of reactive?
Yeah, you know, some school districts have tried various things. And I know Little Rock School District is implementing some of those things. I'll let Mr. Poor talk about the things, Mr. Poor, you were talking about with sporting events, for instance. But as far as going virtual, what a school would need to do if they had an idea, a plan they wanted to come up with, was, you know, call us, we asked for a consult. We compare notes on cases with the situation is right now, what the trend seems to be in the school's district's cases, and compare that with community and what they're seeing and what we're seeing, comparing notes, and then discuss what the plan is. Those calls have Department of Education folks on them as well. And then we try to come up with a plan.
Okay, and so the last piece, for clarity, would be districts will still have to go through, like a clearinghouse, the ADE and the Department of Health, in order to go virtual?
Yes, I think that has, is mainly when, when it's going to be an extended period of time. I'm forgetting the time period that ADE has put on that. If it's a matter of a few days, you know, we suddenly ran into a shortage with teachers in this school and we just can't have class. Schools have been able to make that decision for a few days. I think it's up to a week. Mr. Poor might be able to inform you more specifically. But it's when it's going to get into, you know, more than a week. We're looking at two weeks. We're thinking longer than that period. That's when we want to talk with you and see if that, you know, if we can see anything else that indicates, yeah, that's a good idea or maybe, maybe there's something else you can do instead.
Well, thank you.
I just want to make one comment real quick on the statistic you provided. And just make sure this is clear for our public is Pulaski County does not lead in positivity rate. In fact, it's actually quite low compared to others. And Mr. Tomlinson, you can back me up on this. We have risen, though, in Pulaski County over the last month. And if I remember right, today, I think we were about 8.3 or 8.4 on positivity rate over the last week. But if you go compare that then into the Fayetteville region or the Bentonville region, both of those areas, Benton County and Washington County is an example, just for a point of clarity. Both of those, I think, are, and again, it looks like Dr. Tomlinson's looking it up, but probably around 12%. There are places in our state that exceed 15%, and some are even in a higher percentage rate than that. We do have a large number of cases in our county. I want to make sure, that's probably what you referred to.
Yes, it is. That's exactly what I was referring to.
The total number of cases always, Pulaski County is typically always in the top three. Dr. Tomlinson, anything to add to my comment?
Yeah, you're right. The number of cases in Pulaski County and Benton County and Washington County, the most populous counties are pretty typically usually higher. They've only, you know, not been the highest when there's a pretty significant outbreak somewhere else that's really taken that area by storm. I'm just looking up the Pulaski County data right now. The PCR positivity is eight and a half percent. The antigen positivity is 15 and a half percent. So you take that in together, it really, the balance depends on, you know, how many of those tests were actually antigens and how many were PCRs. The majority of them are going to be PCRs. The antigen tests are always going to have a higher positivity. Why? Because the people who should be getting an antigen test generally are ones who have symptoms. And if you've got symptoms, you are more likely to have COVID as the cause for your symptoms. So that affects that. And, but yeah, that's the kind of breakdown right now on the positivity rates that I'm showing most recently.
Mr. Tomlinson, I'm so sorry.
No, go ahead. You're recognized. Go ahead.
Well, I just, it struck me just now when we were talking about that positivity rate. Under the CDC's current guidelines, having school, in-person school with that rate of community spread or positivity rate, is that still considered a highest risk or a very high risk? Under the, I mean, I remember fairly recently looking at guidelines, and they had positivity rate, and they had, you know, red zone essentially as the, just do we fall into that category?
So in the CDC's schema, they've got different factors that go red, orange, yellow, and down, right? And positivity rate is one of those, but it's not the only one. The other factors they have are like, are schools actually, you know, doing anything to prevent COVID? And like, if you look at the things that put people in red, it's like they were expecting some schools to just not be doing anything, like nothing. Nobody's facing, nobody's wearing masks, nobody's taking any precautions whatsoever as in the red zone. And so that's why we are trying to balance those different factors when we're trying to make the decisions on virtual versus in-class.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I have one last follow-up question?
Can you do it in 15 seconds?
Yes, I can. Dr. Tomlinson, can, I just want to ask the big conclusory question that hasn't been asked yet. Is it safe for Little Rock kids to be in-person in school right now?
I mean, I think it's a matter of what level of safety are we looking for? Is it absolutely safe? No, it's, you know, the only thing that would be safe in that respect would be to stay at home, everyone, and not go anywhere. You know, I think it's like Dr. Bar said, we're trying to balance the negative effects of not being in school with the negative effects of potentially being in school. And so, you know, right now with the measures that are being taken, if those measures continue and schools continue to look at their process and make sure they're doing the best they can. I think what we've seen, when we've done consults with schools and then seen time and again that they didn't get it in school, they got it outside. There's very little spread in schools, and we've not, you know, just very isolated cases, sports teams, things like that, where there's been, you know, there's been spread and in a group. Because of that, it makes me think that, you know, it is relatively safe comparing what else they might be doing if they weren't in school. It is relatively safe being in school. Is it absolutely safe? No, it isn't. But I think it is relatively safe compared to the other things they might be doing if they weren't in class.
Yeah, I would echo that, and the article that Jeremy distributed, I think, addresses some of the, there are risks to being in school and there are risks to not being in school. And I think that, I think, I applaud you all for dealing with these questions and struggling with, you know, that decision. But I think that there are risks on both sides, and it's really weighing, you know, the risk-benefit ratio of that decision.
And just to be clear, your question, are you talking about the safety for students? Or are you also including the adults, the teachers, the staff, the faculty in that answer?
Director Nolan, was that for Dr. Bar or Dr. Tomlinson, about the question? You're muted. You're muted. You're on mute.
I think that the answers that were given were really specific to students. And I may be wrong, but I just wanted to clarify whether we were just talking about students or also about whether it was safe for the adults in the school at the same time.
And my comments were related to kids, effects on kids.
Yes, ma'am. When I was thinking of my comments, I was directing them primarily toward kids. I think a similar, you know, a similar risk-benefit analysis would have to be done for adults as well, right? And I think with precautions in place, that it can be a safe, a relatively safe environment for adults as well. Obviously, their risk of having a severe case of COVID is somewhat higher. It is higher than children, especially small children, than if they're adults. But most of the adults that we've seen have the cases, have gotten their COVID outside of school as well.
Okay, so Dr. Bar and Dr. Tomlinson, we thank you so much for coming to address the board and to answer our questions as the best as you could and helping us as well as the community with information to move forward. So we definitely thank you for spending a good bit of your evening with us. I will turn it over to Dr., I mean, Mr. Poor to see, and then if he has any closing remarks for both doctors.
No, thank you, gentlemen, and appreciate your time and investment in the Little Rock School District. And it's not just a one evening thing. You guys are there for us. So very much appreciate all the time that you and your organizations put into us. Thank you.
Thank you for the work that you all do, and we deeply appreciate, you know, your roles with educating children. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, you guys. Good evening and night. Okay, so moving our agenda forward, we will now talk about sick leave. So we will hear a first read, and Mr. Poor?
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Hatter. And so just to, I know you probably have read your executive summary on this topic that gives good context for what we're going to discuss tonight. But I want to make sure everybody kind of understands a little bit of what we're doing here. Basically, in a nutshell, we had, prior to Christmas, we were following federal and state guidelines, and that basically gave our employees up to 20 days to seek COVID relief on their absences. At the end of this, not calendar year, but this, yeah, this calendar year in December, that form of leave went away. We still have not received guidance from the Department of Ed formally to say, here's what we need to do with that leave. But what we decided to do was really reach out, and Mr. Robinson has led this effort to make sure that we created a resolution. We looked at other districts. He'll give a little more detail on that. We then took it to the PPCs of both classified and certified. Both of the presidents for the classified and certified are with you tonight, Ms. Austin and Ms. Eason, in case you have questions or that they would like to provide comment. Once we went to those PPCs, we got different feedback, and you probably see that in the paperwork. The classified was much different than the certified. The administration then came up with their own recommendation that was modified from the original proposal and basically tried to replicate what we had in the first semester. As we go forward with you tonight, we want to take your input and thoughts because obviously we want you to approve this. We want to get to a place where we could give our employees a sense of relief to say, okay, we're in a good place. This has been taken care of. So that's why we want to come back on Thursday. Now, in between there, as you give us some guidance tonight, and so Mr. Robinson will give a very short report. We're going to be able to open it up for discussion. Again, you can ask Ms. Austin or Ms. Eason for input if you'd seek. And then what we get from you is going to generate, in my, it could generate a new administrative proposal. And if we modify our proposal, we have to, no matter what, take it back to those PPCs. So Ms. Austin will have to conduct a special meeting this week, Tuesday or Wednesday, as will Ms. Eason with her group, in order to give you, again, additional feedback on the administration's proposal that we'll come back to on Thursday. I hope that makes some sense. And the only thing that made me feel good about it is I saw Ms. Austin shaking her head up and down like, yeah, that's the way it's going to go. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Robinson to give a little bit more background. And obviously, this does have a financial thing that's important for everybody to understand. Mr. Robinson, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Superintendent. President, Board President, members of the board. The Superintendent already stated that you have before you the executive summary. Following the executive summary, you have two attachments. Attachment one would be a suggestion provided by the certified PPC. Attachment two, suggestion provided by the classified PPC. I'd like to just call your attention to page two of the executive summary. The Superintendent already stated and provided a well-overall statement about it in the background to show some of what we are today. But if you look at page two of the executive summary, at the bottom, there are three questions before the board for consideration, three questions. Should the board authorize 10 days of COVID-19 sick leave? The second question. Should the board authorize 20 days of COVID-19 sick leave? The third question. Should the board authorize COVID-19 paid sick leave days with no cap for each employee? The State of Arkansas, not the state, but the Arkansas Department of Education, has recommended that all school districts will provide up to 10 days of COVID leave for employees. After the Superintendent heard feedback from the certified PPC and the classified PPC, Superintendent Poor decided to support and recommend 20 days of paid sick leave available to each employee. And he feels this is in the best interest of the employees. And he feel this is in the best interest of the employees as well as the school district. If the board should support and approve the Superintendent's resolution, the conservative figure is two million eight hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred and five dollars to fund twenty days of COVID nineteen sick leave for each employee. And that is a conservative figure. How did we arrive at that conservative figure? Receive input from the Chief Financial Officer. We decided that the estimate of a conservative figure for certified teachers would be based on forty percent, forty percent of them not able to work from home. Most of them would be able to work from home. When it comes to non-certified or classified employees, we base that on seventy percent. The document attached, you will find, uh, as I stated, attachment one for the certified and attachment two for the classified. And the administration is recommending twenty days at a significant point that the Superintendent has made. Uh, rather than to, uh, provide only two-thirds day-to-day to pay for some employees, depending on what the issue is as to whether they need to be off. The Superintendent has made across the board, uh, proposal that all employees will benefit up to twenty days at their day-to-day pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Okay, I will open it up for discussion, uh, for the Board of Directors. Okay, seeing that, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Delay on my end. Okay, and then, uh, Director Wood after Director Nolan.
Well, is it? Are we expecting additional state or federal funding that offset this?
Yes, thank you for the question and, and we are, um, we do, it's going to be called ESAR two. Okay, so the first funds were ESAR one, we simply more or less called it care funding, uh, when we, we received it. And you'll see some of that in the presentation from Dr. Oa of how we spent some of our care funding in the first semester. We are anticipating, uh, additional funds in this coming semester. And we believe that we'll have just a little less than a year to expend those funds. We have a wide variety of things we might want to use it for. And that could be on technology replacement, that could be on, uh, trying to support, uh, even some summer makeup for learning loss. If we needed it, it could support, uh, additional PPE that we might need. It could support this effort on the COVID leave, if you all approve it, the resolution. And it also can help us with substitutes. So, let's say that Ms. Austin, as a teacher at Cloverdale, had to be quarantined today, but she could teach from home. She doesn't have to take the COVID leave, but she, am I saying that right? Yeah, she has to teach from home and, and then she has to have a substitute in the classroom with the kids, but she still could teach. So, what happens is we got to find it, we, this new funding formula will allow us to pay for that substitute. We were not able to do that before because it was a different set of strings of money of how it was attached. So that's a positive thing, but we will spend some money on substitutes and that'll help us in our overall budget. Mr. Bailey, I hope I didn't stumble on that. Was I correct on my, the way I worded that?
You for it.
All right, Mr. Poor, um, is there any idea of how much we will receive and whether or not it would? You know, we have essentially three proposals before us. Um, would that pool of money cover any of the three and, you know, they would all be covered? I, I'm specifically thinking about the fact that our budget continues to be an area of concern. So, I want to, uh, to know whether or not we, we can cover these proposals.
We anticipate that the money that will be allocated to the Little Rock School District will be considerably more than what we received in the first semester. Uh, but then, of course, it becomes choices, as money always becomes, okay? What else could we use this for? So, do we stick with the kind of the, the level of funding for leave that we had in the first semester? Do we enhance it? Um, and that's why we're, we're trying to generate what you guys think. But understand that you can kind of see a, a buildup. Here's what ten days cost, here's what twenty days cost. You can kind of then go do a little bit of math, say here's what, if we jump it up to thirty days or unlimited amounts of, of COVID leave, that your numbers are going to escalate. And the higher we pay for COVID leave, then it makes it so we have less for some of the other things. Would there be money? Yes, for all three options, uh, that Mr. Robinson outlined. Kelsey, did you have a comment?
Good evening again. Basically, the original allocation for ESAR one, the state received a hundred and twenty-nine million. They're estimated to receive about five hundred and twenty-nine million on this round. So, based on some preliminary numbers we have gotten, uh, it was going to be about a thousand seventy-two per student right now. And that might increase, but the state is scheduled to get at least three to four times the amount of money we received the first round. So, there should be significant funding to fund either of these options.
Okay, uh,
I like this.
Oh, yes, one second, and then I have you in the queue. Um, Director Nolan, are, have you concluded your question?
Um, I have not, I'll be quick, but, um, the other one, the other two questions I had was, does this anticipate, and maybe this is a very simple question, but does it anticipate retroactive application, um, back to January first? Considering that we had some people that had to quarantine, um, since we came back to school.
I'll answer it, Mr. Robinson, yes, it does.
Okay. Um, and then, the, the next question I had was, one of the proposals is for, um, so we have ten days, twenty days, or I believe it was twenty days per event or, you know, and it could continue if there were multiple events. Do we have any idea how many teachers last semester would have exceeded that twenty days? Um, and, and I guess, at part, is there any way that we could create a policy that is slightly more flexible? Say approve twenty days, but if we start to see teachers that are exceeding that twenty days, then act on it, you know, to, to address that concern or that need?
Uh, no, we did not have any teachers to exceed the number of days that never became an issue, uh, from, uh, from July one through December thirty-first.
Okay, okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Uh, Director, uh, Wood, uh, you are next. Then, um, I saw, um, Ms. Ev, Ms., uh, Doc., um, sorry, Director Callaway and then, um, Ms. Austin. Mr. Mason, are you unmuted to speak?
Yes, yes, to ask a question, yes.
And then, Mr. Mason. Okay, go ahead, Director Wood.
Thank you. Uh, my first question, I guess, will be to, uh, Mr. Poor. Uh, the exam, in the example you just gave of Ms. Tha-, i- in a situation where Ms. Austin would have to quarantine, but could teach from home, that, that example would not be an example of using the sick leave, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we are, so we are crafting a policy that will afford individuals sick leave when they have to quarantine and they are unable to perform the duties of their, uh, expect, the ex, the expected duties for them to perform.
Correct.
And that's what Mr. Robinson said, that no one exceeded, was it twenty days in the fall? And no employees exceeded the twenty-day allotment that they had in the fall semester, is that right, Mr. Robinson?
That is correct, that is correct.
It, may I, I, I'm, I'm very sorry, this is Jordan Easton. Um, we did have, uh, Mr. Wood, some teachers who did exceed the twenty days last semester. It was not a huge number and I can get that count for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Easton.
Yeah, I think that would be important to know, you know, what we're, what we're dealing with as far as having any type of a, a cap. Um, potentially, you know, could we have some sort, could we explore the idea of some sort of pool that would apply for either each building or the district as a whole that in, in a situation where a few employees might have to go over whatever cap, they could reach into a, a, a pool that we set aside as, you know, some, some flexibility. I, I don't know that that's proposed in any of these proposals, but it'd be something to chew on between now and, uh, Thursday, I think. What are, what are your thoughts on that, Mr. Poor?
We, we can look at that, uh, and I, I think that may be important, even, Ms. Austin may have a comment on that topic. Uh, kind of fits in a little bit to their concept.
Okay.
Actually, we could hear from Ms. Austin right now, uh, and then, uh, because then that goes directly with, uh, Director Wood's question. Ms. Austin, are you, are you prepared to speak?
I am prepared.
Yes, you're always prepared.
Thank you. First of all, uh, Madam President Hatter, thank you for allowing me to speak at the Board of Directors' work session. Um, and I am Lakeitha Austin, the Certified PPC Chair, and, um, I'm just glad to be here to present. Um, as the proposal has been presented to you all, the two things that the certified PPC looked at, um, as you will see in number one, is we did insert the word work in front of days just so that everyone would know that our work days are Monday through Friday. And so they would, there would be no confusion about that including the weekends. And the second change that we did, um, look at or, um, was in section one A I. Um, we did have a, um, a friendly amendment to, um, to insert per occurrence, and I just want to state our rationale behind that. As Mr. Poor has said, um, there are many teachers who have gone on quarantine, who were able to, um, work from home and did work from home. So when we said ten work days per occurrence, because we do know that there have been individuals who have had to quarantine on more than one occasion, and for those who are truly, truly sick, we felt like the per car, the per occurrence was needed because this is what we don't want. We don't want people to be quarantined and then go on maybe a second quarantine and exhaust all of their sick leave. Then on the third one, I hate to say this, but you will, you are going to run into some people who are going to choose between their paycheck and choose between coming to school sick or coming to work sick and infecting others. So that was the biggest part of why we did put per occurrence in case, uh, an employee does have to go on a quarantine. And again, those would be like, you know, especially people who are sick and would not be able to work from, from home. So, we just didn't want anybody to have to choose between, oh, okay, my check is now going to be docked. I can't afford to stay at home, so I'm just going to keep quiet and just go ahead and go to work. That's the part that we, we did not want, um, to see. And to, um, kind of piggyback off of Mr. Wood, um, of course, um, we did reschedule our PPC meeting until next week because we did take up this issue last week on January the fifth. But part of our agenda is a sick leave bank. Because there are some people who say, hey, I have some sick leave and I'm willing to share that leave with an employee who may really need it. But, um, and so that will be a topic that we will discuss at our next meeting next week. Um, because there has been some ideas about forming a sick leave bank and being able to, um, have the employee to designate their leave where they feel like it would be appropriate. And, um, also, and just to bring to your attention on the second page, which is step eleven, you know, if for some reason that, um, we thought that an employee was abusing the COVID leave, then that is what statement number eleven is for, that, you know, if they find out someone is not doing what they should be doing, then that action will be taken up with that employee. So there is a good faith, um, clause there, there for, um, those of, you know, for the certified staff. But, you know, Lord forbid, hopefully no one does do anything like that, but it is there. So I just kind of wanted to let you all know where, where we were, um, as far as the COVID sick leave gap. And again, um, thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the certified PPC. And if you have any questions, um, of me, I will be here to answer. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Austin. Uh, Director Callaway?
Oh, this is one thing that has bothered me. What if a teacher, employee, uh, staff member or a child is hospitalized? And their hospital lasts beyond the, uh, twenty days, okay? And, you know, we're, we're seeing cases where people are coming out three, four months later and still are really not able to function, uh, you know, walk, talk or whatever. Is there going to be anything that's going to be added to that? And, uh, I didn't get to this in the last question, but I still want this to be recognized. Uh, are we taking temperatures at the door of every school? Now, the only place that I've really been, uh, uh, that I've seen it was downtown. I visited one school and the only thing you had to do is write your name down. Now, that would be an effective way of catching people with the temperature. But, that's, that's a suggestion, but my, my big concern is, I guess, because I know, I knew one of the employees who had COVID who passed away. And I know they were in the hospital longer than twenty days. But there are a lot of people who are recovering from COVID and they're going to have to be out, uh, more than twenty days. Do they have to worry about, uh, or, or should they have some, some kind of employee insurance like we used to have? Uh, that would pay for that. Because like I said, people might decide they want to come back because they can't afford to be off.
Thank you, I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Easton because she handles the, uh, really what she started to move into is FMLA, uh, when you exceed a, a certain amount of time. So, Ms. Easton, do you want to cover that transition?
Yes, I hope my video is coming through and I apologize if you hear my, uh, cat meow. But, um, good evening, everyone. Um, yes, to that question, we have had, I want to say between five to ten employees who have needed, who have had to exceed the, um, COVID paid leave the first semester. Um, and those employees, some, several of those, um, five to ten employees were hospital, hospitalized. And in that case, what we do is we immediately send a medical leave packet in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act and, um, we approve those employees for FMLA. That means that that is job protective leave. Um, it also means that, um, unfortunately, employee's sick leave is used, um, because medical leave is an unpaid leave.
I, I do want to say the mayor in that area, after they have exhausted the twenty days, then it is understanding that all available sick leave, unavailable sick leave will be used to the employee to comply with FMLA as well.
Right. Okay, thank you, Ms., uh, Ms. Easton and, uh, Mr. Robinson. Uh, next, uh, Mr., uh, Director Mason.
Yeah, uh, thank you, thank you, President Hatter. Uh, I just had the same question that Director Nolan and Director Wood had about, uh, collecting the, the data from last semester, uh, the teachers that were out last semester. Uh, could we get an average day out for those that were, uh, that were sick due to, uh, COVID nineteen? Uh, that would help, kind of help us make a decision on the resolution. Uh, average day out and the amount of teachers that, that were out, if you don't mind.
Okay, um, so, Ms. Easton? Okay, um, so Ms. Easton, will you, Mr., Mr. Poor, who would be, uh, charged with getting that data to us?
Thank you, Ms. Hatter, and I appreciate how you reframed that right back to your, your employee. Your employee is me, right? So thank you, uh, you read the book and, uh, I appreciate that. So, yeah, we will make sure that our staff works on that and has some, uh, additional information for you on Thursday, uh, kind of related to Ms. Nolan, Mr. Wood and, and Mr. Mason.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you so much. Okay, uh, Ms., uh, Director Adams, hello, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Hatter, and, um, I, I wanted to ask Mr. Poor, before you, you mentioned that, um, you, you know, the administration, you looked at the proposals from both of the PPCs and, and, and took ideas and came up with an administration proposal. Could you speak some more about the administration thinking about why some ideas were adopted and, and some, some other ideas were not?
Yes, thank you for the question, Mr. Adams. Uh, I'll try to be pretty concise. The, you might have seen the classified proposal and you say, well, that seems out of left field compared to the other proposals. But actually, the classified proposal fits in with what the federal, uh, group gave as recommendations. So that's where that came. And by the way, that's a policy or a resolution that kind of matches with where Springdale School District is, seems to be going on this issue. Um, the, uh, the ten days obviously was guidance from the state. That was our starting point to bring into both PPCs. We amended it then to go to twenty, um, after hearing some of the conversation specifically in the Certified PPC that made us adjust our thinking. And I could see where you as a board really might be weighing, you know, uh, Ms. Austin's proposal as well. You know, it's, uh, maybe the additional data will help, but, um, overall, that kind of gives you a little bit of a feel. We also reached out to multiple districts. Mr. Robinson did a good job of reaching out. We know that we looked at Fort Smith as an example of somebody that, that was a little bit ahead of us on this and created a resolution and we looked at theirs and then modified the approach. Mr. Robinson was a Rogers School District also that we, uh, looked at.
Uh, yes, we, um, we talked to, uh, Palasca County and all the school districts in the Palasca County area and, uh, Springdale. And then we also talked to, uh, some major school districts outside of the state of Arkansas, Dallas ISB, Miami Dade, uh, Chicago, uh, we, uh, at least five or six other districts at that, at that level.
Sorry about that. Okay, um.
Thank you.
Okay, is, is there any further discussion from the board regarding, uh, Director Callaway, you are, uh, recognized?
Okay. I'm, I'm, I still didn't, we, you didn't give me, they didn't give me a complete answer on that. And I don't see that anywhere in, in this document. I think it should be stated that, uh, you know, like without fear of reprisal because I know when she, um, um, talked about, well, we'll send out a packet. Well, it's been a long time ago, but I've done packets before, like when I had my children. My baby is thirty-two. Uh, where I had to do a packet, uh, and fill that out and get information from the doctor and whatnot. But you know, in COVID, uh, these people, if they're on vent or if they're on oxygen, they're not going to be able to do that. And I don't think, I, I feel like that my question was not answered. I, you know, I have real serious concern about this. Now, uh, our, our teachers are valuable. And if we get to a place where we have to not be able to have school because we have a, we have so many teachers being sick, now we have three different COVIDs that are coming into play. Now, hopefully the vac, vaccine works and hopefully I'll get it at some point. But right now, we don't have that. And I don't think that, uh, you know, I'm not talking about the abuse of sick leave or anything like that. I mean, like in special cases where you have to be hospitalized. Now, I'd like to know, how, how many, how many employees or staff members or whatever passed away uh, other than what I know or had extended, uh, extended leave because of this virus?
Okay, um, okay, uh, Director Callaway, Mr. Poor, is, um, is, is that something that can be answered now? Or, or, or are you able to have that included in the, uh, data that was, was requested? Uh, particularly about, I'm sorry?
I give a two-part answer that, um, first is that we do work very diligently with our employees on, on FMLA and that's kind of a, a collaborative effort, everything from principals to the employee to even our teacher association who represents the best interest of the employees to try to make sure that they understand all of their rights and responsibilities. This is a topic that is, comes up quite often with, uh, means I have with Ms. Gordon, um, in, in terms of FMLA and making sure we do this right. So, um, I, I have a, a pretty good, high degree of confidence that, that we are performing that very well. I think in terms of some of the data that you may be asking for related to number of cases, there's going to be a little bit of that, uh, that you're going to hear in Dr. Owa's report next that will share some of, uh, what we know about, uh, how many, uh, faculty members have had to be quarantined and, and those type of things.
I'd like to ask this question, uh, uh, again. Do we know that, uh, and I can't speak to it. Uh, do, do we know that each school that we have has someone taking temperatures at the door? Uh, for instance, um, you know, like the hand sanitizer and the temperature at the door is definitely a red flag. And, uh, I, I would feel, um, I don't know about the current teachers, but I would feel more comfortable if we had someone assigned to take temperatures at the door.
Okay, uh, Mr. Poor, uh, um, in the sake of moving the agenda along, um, are you able to, um, address, uh, Director, uh, Callaway? And then after you, um, Mrs. Austin's going to come, come back on, um, to, uh, share some, some, uh, thoughts about classified employees.
Thank you, and, um, I will share that Dr. Owa in his, uh, report also will share a little bit about some of the things that we try to do related to, uh, compliance. Ms. Wilson, you presented several of those questions to us, uh, maybe a week ago and, and so that will be a part of the report of how we try to, uh, do that. Um, I will share that on the, the thermometer, um, and many of you probably have done that too. Like today, um, I was at ninety-seven, I think ninety-seven point three. Um, so, you know, that I'm telling you, those thermometers are probably one of the least likely tools that we have in our arsenal to really determine, uh, whether or not someone has the virus. Uh, we have all sorts of proactive things that you're going to hear in Dr. Owa's report that we're doing with BiNext testing that I think is going to give you some assurance, Ms. Callaway. Uh, but if we get to that report, I think that will help.
Ms., um, Austin, Mrs. Austin, you are recognized. Thank you, Mr. Poor.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Um, before I leave, I just wanted to say, um, one thing that I feel like that I have to say on behalf of the classified. So I do get emotional about classified because my mother worked for the school district, Little Rock School District up until her death in two thousand and nine. And so when we, when the, the, when the Certified PPC had heard about some of the changes that the classified made, we were a little bit disheartened because number one, except for a secretary, classified staff cannot telework. Cafeteria workers can't work from home, transportation workers can't work from home, security officers cannot work from home. And I do realize that you, um, that Mr. Poor mentioned that the two-thirds pay was based on federal guidelines. But you all, our classified, our transportation, our security, our cafeteria workers, our office staff, they are the lowest paid employees that we have. And Lord forbid that they have to go out and take care of a loved one and to receive only two-thirds of their pay. Many of them are barely, you know, just making the, the minimum wage. So, um, not to sway your decision in one way or another, but although I represent certified, I really represent everybody. And I just wanted to bring that comment forth because the classified people have been reaching out to me and they want to know what's the difference in what we're doing and what the classified is doing. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there that it's, it's almost impossible for them to telework from home unless there were going to be some duties created for them to work from home. So those are my final thoughts in regards to, um, classified. But I would hope that they could at least have some of the benefits of a certified, um, staff member. So those are just my closing thoughts, but, um, again, I just, my conscience would not have been clear had I not been able to say that on behalf of the Little Rock School District classified employees. Thank you, Madam President.
Mrs. Austin, um, I thank you for, uh, representing and, and bringing, um, that to our awareness um, about the classified, um, employees. Um, we, we probably need to hear from the, we do need to hear from the Classified PPC as well to make sure that maybe we are have, we, we are having a fair and balanced approach to, um, cover both classified and certified. That's a discussion uh, that actually I'm gonna, um, question I'll turn over to, uh, Mike, uh, our Superintendent Poor uh, because we do not want our, um, our, uh, classified staff to go without, um, because it's definitely not intentional.
Yeah, and, and I hope I shared this at the beginning. If I did not, I apologize. But we do have the Classified, uh, group with us tonight. And Ms. Easton was the person selected from that Classified group to be their leader, just like Ms. Austin is. There are classified elections throughout the district for all the different employee groups. So the Classified group is a representative body that is picked by their constituents. And then there are members that come in and then they make their own decisions. And so just as Ms., Ms. Austin, uh, is aware, hey, sometimes our classified people wonder what the heck our certified people are doing. You know, that can kind of go back and forth a little bit. So we need to be careful on that. But Ms., uh, Easton is available, um, if you have specifics about why they went into their proposal. I did try to cover that. Uh, but you certainly can hear her words, uh, if you like.
Ms. Easton, uh, do you have, um, any, and anything to add? Uh, definitely, I will, I, I will be going back over and reading, um, the proposal again uh, with a different lens. But, um, do you have anything you would like to add so we can move forth with our agenda?
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I, I did just want to say that, um, the Classified PPC, uh, took the proposal, um, that we had to review and, um, we did not really understand that we were able to propose, I guess, um, more than ten days. So I, on behalf of our PPC, I think that if we knew that, um, going above the federal regu, excuse me, the federal regulations of the ten days, the twenty, if the, if, if we knew that twenty days would have been an option or even thirty days or forty days, I, I have no doubt that, um, the Classified, uh, PPC committee would have approved that as well. Um, we just went based on the proposal that we were given and based it off of the information, um, in that policy. And what we added were just clarifications on whether it was full pay or two-thirds pay. I think one of the four options, um, to care for a family member was two-thirds pay. And we just were, were, as a committee, trying to mimic what the federal regulations were the previous semester. Um, and of course, if the policy went back to our committee, um, who represent all of the classified groups, I know that if the one option that was the two-thirds pay, I have no doubt that our committee would most definitely approve, um, that from two-thirds pay to full pay. So I just wanted to, you know, make that clear to everyone.
Okay, um, so are you, are, am I hearing you're, you're going to go back to your PPC or?
Let me jump in on that, Ms. Hatter, and, and so I think this maybe will bring us to a, a wrap-up for tonight on this topic, hopefully. But remember, I started off also on this, this instance that we, as an administration, uh, we've, we've listened to all of you. Um, we can either keep the same policy we have or we can amend it. No matter what happens, the, the, the recommendations have to go back to both PPC groups. If we kept it exactly where it is right now with twenty, our certified or our classified have not seen this updated version as a large group. So they have to have a special meeting tomorrow or Wednesday. And then they will also give you their feedback on Thursday as a part of the action item, just like we would on any other policy. So Ms. Austin will talk, Ms. Easton will talk and say, we like, uh, what was done, thank you. We, like Ms. Austin, they say, you agreed with what we wanted, we're good to go. It may be that short. If we stay at twenty, she's probably going to try to convince you to go up, okay? Um, and Ms. Easton's group will do, uh, they'll have to make a decision too. As a, a district, we have to finalize our proposal in the next twenty-four hours so that we can get it back into the hands of these PPC folks. Does that help, Ms. Hatter?
Yes, it does. It does. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, guys, um, for, for that very robust, um, conversation and our first read of the COVID leave. Uh, thank you, uh, Mrs. Austin for, uh, coming, um, and presenting and, uh, sharing your, your thoughts. Uh, the next, um, moving along with our agenda, the next, um, item will be the Ready for Learning, uh, Plan.
Yeah, let me just lead into this and I, I want to do it a little unique. I want to recognize our POC to start off with. Um, because before Dr. Owa starts, you know, our POC gets mentioned a lot. And, um, I, they're on tonight and they're a part of the conversation tonight, especially with this element coming up because they are the hands-on folks, as Dr. Tomlinson said. Uh, we are so fortunate. Uh, and our POC gets complimented by both the Department of Health and the Department of Education and from our staff in terms of how they've handled this. They have been busy, um, non-stop, obviously, uh, since really this, we came back to school uh, in terms of their work. Uh, it's led by, uh, three individuals and then complimented by our nursing staff. So I, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up our nurses, uh, how critical they are to helping and supporting this team. Margot Bushmeyer, who leads as Director of all of our nurses, um, and, uh, Mr. Ron Self, who is the Director of our security, and Ms., um, Christine Doolman, who is really Margot's, uh, was really supposed to be Margot's top assistant on all sorts of stuff, but now she's become, you know, a POC almost full-time. All three of these people juggle a tremendous workload and board members I know, um, whether it's in the chat or if you see them individually, these people deserve a ton of credit. Uh, I'm going to turn our, our presentation over to Dr. Owa. Appreciate all of the advanced questions that so many of you have asked that we hope we're going to be able to address in the PowerPoint of just some data of what's going on. I kept challenging Dr. Owa to say, you've got fifteen minutes. And, uh, he keeps looking at me because I keep coming to him with more things because you all keep coming with more things. So, uh, we're going to try to have a, a pretty concise presentation and then we know that there'll be some questions and, and, uh, conversation afterwards.
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, can everyone see my screen, the PowerPoint? Uh, this evening, I would like to give you a review of where we are with our Ready for Learning, uh, Plan, Implementation Plan, our top focus areas, uh, and as Superintendent Poor just noted, and I thought I changed this, but we started with top three focus areas, but then we kept adding to it. So, uh, five top, uh, focus areas, uh, in there before you. This PowerPoint will also be, uh, sent to you in email, but I'll also add it to the chat uh, so that you have it for tonight as well. But the requirement of mask, uh, you will see in the next slide that that there are compliance expectations and infractions that uh go along with the requirement of mask. The wearing of mask uh in its proper form has always been non-negotiable. Uh we've had uh students who have been worn and then uh pivoted to the virtual learning environment because they continue to refuse a second time to wear their mask. And we've also had to have some personnel uh meetings as well based on this requirement. Uh we continue to focus on social and physical distancing. We know that for some of our older buildings and uh and just buildings throughout the district, uh our classroom spaces are small. Uh so a lot of our districts, several of our school uh district buildings, uh classrooms, remove classroom furniture so that they could space the uh the student desk out more. And so many of our teachers cleared their rooms so that they could adhere to the physical distancing. As we have shift uh shifts between enrollment and the in-person as well as virtual, that the physical distancing um sometimes change and has changed. And so it goes back to the first requirement of a mask, because we know that when uh physical distancing cannot be achieved to where we would like it to be, then we know that the requirement of mask uh will also assist with uh the safety measures that we have in place outlined in our Ready for Learning Plan. Uh you will see in all our buildings that our staff members have done a great job in marking spaces in the hallway and the cafeteria and all the common areas, in the gyms, uh gymnasiums, to ensure that students adhere to physical distance distancing as much as possible. Uh they've also put some requirements uh for the adults, for our staff members in the buildings as well. Um several of our elementary uh schools have grouped our scholars, our elementary scholars into cohorts or groups. They stay with those groups throughout the day. Even when they go uh onto the playground for recess or for physical activity, they're uh they are playing with the same students so that we could monitor uh any possible uh infections, or uh we can actually do possible contacts, the contact tracing effectively based on the measures that our teachers and staff members, principals have put in place at that uh lower level. And I could tell you just for direct observation, many of our young scholars, uh they do not have any issues with wearing masks. You will see the mask worn proper properly uh at all times, even in the pre-K classrooms. And so that was great to see. Sanitization, uh we continue to make efforts uh to make sure that we deep clean and clean. That was another great uh factor into implementing uh Virtual Fridays. Uh but I do want to commend our licensed and classified staff members who continue to uh go above and beyond with their at efforts. Uh even so, uh notifying the district office as well as their principals when supplies are running low. And our maintenance teams, as well as our supply teams, uh team members are quick to, delivery teams are quickly to deliver the PPE supplies that are needed uh throughout the s- uh school district to make sure that our staff members have those available. Um additional testing, by next uh testing, we started with uh Central High and Parkview. And because we had such great uh success uh in that uh testing, where we were able to find uh positive cases and we could uh actually uh get those uh individuals uh the assistance that they need, uh that was very favorable for the district. And so we expanded the testing sites to Little Rock Southwest, Clinical U Middle Middle School, Little Rock West, and Roberts Elementary School. The next uh phase is the vaccination process. Our team has uh disseminated a survey uh to all staff members, including our partners who are in the school buildings, to ascertain if they would be willing to take the vaccination uh when it's available. And you can see out of thirteen sixty-six respondents, we're up as of today, uh around three o'clock, uh about eighty percent have stated that they would be willing to take the vaccination. Um one of the our board members, Board of Directors, asked about the mask compliance. I had uh kind of hinted toward it uh earlier. Uh these are the infractions uh and consequences that will take place. Uh it's strict adherence, even at sporting events. Uh we've had security and administrators who had to uh ask our attendees, uh both students and adults, to leave if they refused to wear their mask. And they also ensure that everyone uh must adhere to the social distancing. Uh we know in some cases, everyone's not gonna follow the rules. And so our security team, as well as administrators, are readily available to uh make sure that that does happen. Um I've been able to uh visit several of the games, uh middle school games. And um they, the schools are doing what what's needed. Security is there, ready to make sure everyone was spaced out as well. Um lot of questions about the uh district testing. Uh we are required per uh the Department of Ed to test ninety-five percent of our students. Uh currently, we do not know what the consequences are uh for that, but we do have the requirement to do so. And so we're looking at alternative sites for testing for, and and alternative sites meaning some of our building, school buildings uh that are not currently being used uh for students. We're going to utilize those for additional spaces for assessments uh for our students who are in the virtual learning environment, so that we can continue to uh physically distance our students and staff members as much as possible. And we will also use our district staff members uh throughout the district to help administer and proctor the exam as well, because we know that that's a major need. Some of the data, uh current district data as of now, uh actually January fourth, uh we had about a uh twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-seven students who have opted in in-person learning option, and then about nine thousand four hundred and seventy students who have opted into a virtual learning option. And you can see the percentage, uh fifty-nine percent versus forty-one percent. Uh when you receive this PowerPoint, you will also see at the very bottom the full uh stats and data on the learning options. Uh you can see it's broken down by school, by grade level, elementary, middle, and high, and you can see where the percentages are. The number of students who have tested positive, and this is for first semester, was three hundred and seventy-five. Number of in-person students who tested uh posi- positive, uh three twenty-four of that three seventy-five. And then the number of virtual students who tested positive, fifty-one of that three seventy-five uh total. Number of students who've been quarantined, two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two. And I wanted to explain these numbers, uh uh these three numbers, even the number of in-person students quarantined, which is twenty-seven eighty-four, and the number of virtual students who've been quarantined, one forty-eight. All of those numbers are not necessarily individual, represent individual students. Uh per student, they they are cases of quarantine, students who've been quarantined. So some students may have been counted twice based on the number of times they've been quarantined. And then um a positive, uh definitely we're thankful for this, that the number of uh Little Rock School District students who who have died from COVID nineteen, as per our records that we've received from the Department of Health and our POC team, zero. And then with our staff, uh number of staff members who've worked onsite, three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine. Number of staff members who've tested positive for COVID nineteen is two hundred and sixty-three. Then the number of staff members who've received work accommodations due to COVID nineteen virus, twenty-one. And then we have zero for the total of uh staff members who've tested positive or worked remotely offsite. Total number of staff members who've tested positive and worked onsite is two sixty-three. Number of staff members who've been quarantined is nine seventy-eight. And again, just like the previous slide with our students, that number indicates the number of individuals who have uh been quarantined. So that would include, could include uh multiple uh individuals quarantined multiple times. And then the number of staff members who've had to quarantine but worked remotely was zero. The number of staff members who've had to be quarantined and worked onsite is nine seventy-eight. And then, of course, uh sad news that we uh recently heard was that our uh we had one of our staff members who have uh passed away from COVID nineteen, complications with COVID nineteen. In our school buildings, uh the number of schools that have been pivoted to virtual learning, eighteen. Number of days that each school had to pivot to virtual learning by school is one sixty-one. The next slide will show the breakdown of the schools uh and the number of times they had to pivot to virtual learning. The total number of grade levels at individual school sites that had to shift to virtual learning is eight. We had sixty-five uh as the number of days that each grade level had to pivot to learning, to virtual learning. And then, of course, we broke that down by school and grade level on the next slide uh that you will see. Uh as of uh record-keeping and tracking, because uh those were individual classrooms, those numbers were not uh noted uh when we had to pivot uh classrooms due to the number of students who may have been in the classroom. So uh we didn't keep that uh type of data officially at the district level. And then the total number of days that the entire district had to pivot to the virtual, to the virtual learning environment is zero. These are the schools that uh when we had to pivot the entire school to virtual. To the right is the uh outlines the schools that had to pivot entire grade levels to the virtual learning environment. And again, as soon as I finish this, uh so that you all will have it for questions and observation, I'll post it in the uh PDF version in the chat, so you can pull it up. The ADE response levels, uh many of you received or sent questions about what determine, what do we use to determine uh if schools pivot or uh if the district could pivot. Uh we have been issued this response level document from the Department of Education, and they worked in conjunction with the Arkansas Department of Health. And uh so it gives us uh the criteria, the purpose uh that guides uh school administrators at the school level, as well as uh the district level, on how to assess the health risk for staff and students uh when they increase their community spread cases of COVID nineteen may impact delivery of onsite instruction and special 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 services. Um and so this document is linked here. And I wanted to draw your attention to their green, um their green, yellow, and red uh response levels. And it outlines the initial actions after notification, the level of response, considerations of closure, uh recommendations for continuing onsite school operations. Then the moderate response based upon the exposure confirmed cases within the district, within the school. Uh then, of course, the initial actions, considerations, and then the recommendations. And then the critical response level based on multiple cases confirmed. Uh but as stated earlier by our uh medical experts, uh the multiple cases confirmed within the district due to substantial school indoor community spread as determined by ADE, uh Arkansas Department of Health. And so it we have to be in collaboration with not only ADE, but Arkansas Department of Health on the next steps that the district uh has to take uh when it has made it to this critical response. Uh the document uh also shows the communication flow chart that we must follow as a uh public school entity. And then, of course, the terminology. And then I wanted to point out this last uh part in the back is some more uh information on uh limited onsite restrictions based on the confirmed cases, uh moderate onsite uh restrictions, and then, of course, the critical onsite restrictions based upon the multiple cases confirmed within the school population. And so this is the document that uh that guides a lot of our decisions uh as district administrators, school-level administrators, but as well as our point-of-contact team uh that has to make decisions based on if a school, uh a grade level or a classroom has to pivot to onsite, uh I mean to virtual learning. These are our updated uh funding expenditures, as it uh as someone stated earlier that we interchange CARES Act with the ESER funds, uh but uh the official name is ESER funds uh because they're issued from the uh federal government to the state government and then issued to us. Uh these would be the SO one funds. We have not received uh SO two funds. We will receive an application Wednesday in a commissioner's memo that we will complete. That uh application will outline five categories that we can spend SO two funds on. And we'll have until December of twenty twenty-three to expend those funds. Uh but the total cost is a little over six million uh dollars that that we've spent with the ESER funds. And so we have a little left that uh based on the um we have to work with our private schools to recover some of the uh initial funding that was given to them. But based on the recalculation, uh we'll receive those, either the funding or the uh technology items back from them. And this is additional uh information on um all the PPE and safety disinfecting uh merchandise that have been provided. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions? And I'm about to drop this into your uh chat right now.
Thank you, Dr. Oa. Um the floor is open for discussion and questions. I see a few people that have unmuted. I don't know who unmuted first, so I'm gonna start with Leanne, uh Director Wilson, and then I will go to uh Secretary Noel.
Thank you. Um and Dr. Oa, you may not know this, um because this is getting really into the numbers, but for our virtual students that were positive or had to quarantine, do we have the data on how many of those were like participating in extracurriculars or sports?
No, um I don't have that with me tonight, but I will, uh Mr. Seth, uh one of our members of the POC team, I I will check with him to see if he has those numbers uh so that we can get uh give that to you. And I'll share that with the entire board.
Okay, thank you. Director, President Hatter, that was my only question.
Okay. Um first of all, thank you for such a thorough presentation that provided quite a bit of very useful information. Um I have some questions that I have gotten from parents and members of the community. And I'm gonna go through them. Um I'll try to make them make sense as far as grouping them together into different categories. Um one category of questions that I have gotten tends to center around parents being notified. So one was if someone's classroom cannot feasibly socially distance and have the students sufficiently six feet apart. And our parents notified of that, you know, if um there is a positive case in the building, and this isn't actually just about parents, it's other people who are in the building. And I know that there are privacy concerns. I'm not talking about revealing any personal information about who it was. But a lot of the questions I'm getting are really about communicating that kind of information and transparency and notice um to parents or to other people in the building. And so I'll just kind of go through those quickly. One is about notifying everyone in the building when there are positive cases. Are we still um utilizing the close contact rule? Were they only notified if they're within six feet for like fifteen minutes, or is there a?
No.
Okay.
Both. Um most of the communication, we sent out a new uh draft to all the principals in November or December that they needed to follow. And so it's that they needed to follow. And so it's really two rounds. It's a notification to parents and the entire school body that there was a positive case or a quarantine case in the school or a classroom or grade level would have to pivot. And then, the individuals who are or who were a close contact received an additional communication that they were a close contact. But we, after some feedback from parents and some staff members, we made that shift. Because some of our schools were doing that had more effective communication, and we wanted to make sure that it was district-wide. So we implemented that district-wide. And our response to a lot of parents who inquired about that, if that is not happening, then please contact Mr. Darren Smith for elementary or Mr. Randy Rutherford for secondary.
Okay, thank you. And then regarding this social distancing within the classrooms, my perception is that a lot of parents assume that if they are sending their children, then the social distancing is occurring within the classrooms, or they're able to adequately socially distance within the classrooms. I heard part of the presentation earlier, you know, when we aren't able to adequately socially distance, the masks are very important. Is there any way to make sure that we're notifying parents about whether or not their children are able to be adequately socially distanced? What, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was giving that some thought. I don't believe we've ever notified district-wide or even school-wide if that was the case. I can, I'll definitely write that down as a communication piece to see how Superintendent Corr would like us to move forward with that on the classrooms. And so that I'm clear, you're speaking of the classrooms who may not be able to provide that social distance at six feet apart in the classroom due to the number of students and the size of the classroom space?
Yes, and in fact, I'll go one step further, which is that I have seen now several different recommendations for how far apart the students should be kept. And so just getting some clarity on how far we as a district are expecting those students to be kept. And then, when that's not feasible, making sure that we're communicating that, so that there's transparency about that. And that's, you know, and it may be, we may be doing an excellent job of making sure that that's met. I just want to make sure that we're communicating that pretty well to parents and the families.
Dr. Owa and board members, this is Randy Rutherford. I'm the executive director of secondary schools, and good evening. I've been listening in the entire time, but I got a, I do have an answer for Ms. Nolan, and I can help at least partways on that. Some of the discussion has happened that way, Ms. Nolan, just so that you know. I know it really happens when kids are moving that have been virtual, moving back to school to come in person. That is a conversation piece that most, all of our principals are having with the parents that are bringing their kids back to school. Because as we have gained more kids coming back to school, it obviously has gotten a little closer in some cases. And so I know that is a conversation piece, and I, and I want the board to understand. Our principals understand that as well. Those schools that have small classrooms are using large areas such as auditoriums and other areas in order to spread the kids out as much as possible. And again, I just want, I just wanted to comment and jump in just real quick to let you know, yes, some of that conversation is happening. They are not sending home something to parents to say, hey, you're, and I'll just use high school. Your two B class is too close together, and we just wanted to make you aware of that. But most principals are taking that into consideration, and I use Central as the best example. Ms. Rousseau has really done a fantastic job of trying to do that whenever a classroom gets very crowded in what is a small classroom. And so I hope that helps a little bit to say, I can't say that it happens on every case, but I just wanted you to know that it is, there is communication that is happening that way.
Can I jump in on this one, too? I want to also give you just a little bit different statistics than what Dr. Owa did earlier related to who's chose in-person and who's chose virtual, breaking it down by level. At the elementary level, and Dr. Owa, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're at sixty-seven percent. But one important factor about the sixty-seven percent at the elementary level is it, it does include pre-K, which we have no choice at the pre-K level. So that number is escalated by the pre-K numbers, and I don't think we've ever said that before, but pre-K, there is no virtual option. And it's funny that that just struck me tonight as I looked at the data one more time. Middle school numbers right now are at fifty percent, which means that it's a fifty-fifty balance. That actually modified at the start of the second quarter, we were basically around fifty-six percent. So in other words, some parents are more nervous about it, and they've gone to virtual setting or fifty-fifty. At the high school level, we have increased our numbers in terms of those folks that are seeking in-person. And I believe, if I'm correct, Dr. Owa, that number jumped up to fifty-five percent. Is that right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So it, it jumped up about seven percent from where we were at the second quarter. We were around forty-eight or forty-nine. And I do feel like parents have valued that choice. Not only that we have it at the end of a quarter, but also we've been flexible with our principals to the best of my knowledge. And some of you have even helped us most recently on parents that are having trouble navigating, making sure that we help them get to the place that works best for their families.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to continue on just so that we can keep this moving. Along the same lines of communicating information, which a lot of the questions I got were about communicating this information. And I got quite a few questions about the reports, the daily reports that go out. And so I just want to go over those quickly. Just to confirm and make very clear, those reports that come out are not cumulative, correct? They are only the current day's new numbers.
That's correct. Now, Mr. Seth does at times send out a cumulative report, but when he does, it states at, at the very top, what's a cumulative report and what's a daily report.
Okay. You know, I will tell you, I've interacted with quite a few parents that were a bit confused because they would look at the number for their school on a daily report and think that's the number that are quarantined. But that, that shows the new number, correct? The additional students that were quarantined. So I would personally urge that we make sure that we are, you know, if, if parents need a snapshot of how many kids are currently positive or quarantined or things like that, that we're communicating that in a way that's very helpful. When an entire dis, not a district, when an entire school or grade level has to pivot to virtual, are those numbers reflected? They're not reflected in those reports, correct?
When the entire grade level?
Uh-huh. Yes.
Mr. Seth, are you still on?
We can't hear you, Ron.
I believe he probably got off. He, he was on.
No, he's on. His, his, his sound isn't coming in.
Oh, there you, I didn't see you right on my screen. Mr. Seth, go ahead.
Still not coming in. You need to log off, I think, Ron, and come back in maybe.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So Ms. Nolan, no, they are not. That, that is actual quarantine students. So, for example, I'll give you today's report. Williams came out with second grade switched to all virtual. It was due to the three teachers being out, and so we pivoted the whole second grade to virtual. As they were not technically quarantined, they did not come out on that daily report.
Okay. And I do, I understand the difference. Maybe we can also add into that daily report a notation about entire grades or schools that have pivoted to virtual or something like that, just so that we can give a clear snapshot of what's actually going on.
Yeah, it, it does whenever, like today's, and I don't know if you saw it on the website, it says note Williams, all second grade switched to virtual. Are you talking about numbers?
Well, is that, sorry, I keep going back to this, but is that only when that change occurs? Or do you continue to show that throughout the time that it is virtual?
Sure. Only when that change occurs, it comes out on the daily, and then it'll come back out again when it's released. So they'll go back, return to in-person. So for example, if they were going to return to in-person tomorrow, what came out today, will return to in-person on January twelfth.
Okay. Let me make sure. So I think that those have covered my communicating information category questions. I also got quite a few questions about the testing. I've already communicated to you all about that a little bit. I wasn't one hundred percent clear on the presentation that we just saw, the fall-winter testing as opposed to the upcoming spring testing? And can we talk about that a little bit? Because many of the questions I have been getting are about the fall-winter testing and whether parents have to take their children in-person this week, essentially.
The fall and winter, and I have Dr. Cummings, our director of testing assessment, here on the call as well. And so she'll clean up everything that I messed up and add to it. But the fall and winter testing have always been, from the district standpoint, optional. The schools will make, would make the decision locally at the school level if they opted into allowing virtual students to take the assessment at home or require them to come in-person. I know that there were a couple of things that came up with the first administration of the fall NWEA testing, where we've had some of our parents and older siblings to assist our students. And then, of course, there were some cases where technology things were not working well. And then, we also have schools who have been proactive with wanting to give our students the opportunity to have the experience of taking the assessment at the school online. And that's one of the reasons why we were looking at alternative sites for our virtual students to take their assessments. And not just for NWEA, we also looking at for the PSAT as well as ACT. Now, the K-two summative assessment, state assessment, is the NWEA. Three-ten will take the ACT Aspire. The requirement for those summative tests, which are what we call in our spring assessment, is that every student has to be in-person to take that assessment on campus. And then, we have the requirement to assess the ninety-five percent at, at those grade levels as well.
And are both of those requirements from the state level? They're not district requirements about in-person and ninety-five percent?
Yes, that, that's not a district decision nor a school-level decision. That's the decision given to us by the Department of Ed.
It's actually a federal level that ties up into the federal level in terms of accountability as a part of our overall assessment plan.
Um, this, I'm glad you, Director Nolan, you've touched on a lot of my, couple of my points, questions that I was going to ask. And I do want to ask about, and this is for either Dr. Owa or Mrs. Cummings. Given the fact that most of our students have been virtual, and they have made a switch, a number of them have made a switch back to in-person. What measures are in place for, say, the spring testing right when we go into the ACT Aspire for three-ten? I know the NW, the NWEA is optional, that, that really gives the teachers a measurement. But for the ACT Aspire, we have had some level of lost learning with some of our students being virtual and having that hands-on experience. So are any measures in place to assist our, our students and not penalize really the district because that test benefits our district more so? So what measures are in place, and then would a parent be able? I, I know they're able to opt out, but, but, but is there a way for us to put measures in place to where we are not deemed by any low scores because of the pandemic?
Ms. Hatter, I'm, I'm going to ask Dr. Cummings to, to help me with this response. But I, I want to be clear to everyone, viewing audience, that the only optional, the only time that NWEA is optional is for the fall and winter assessments. When we enter the spring assessment, K-two, that is the K-two summative assessment. So there is no options there. So those students will still have to come to the school building to take their assessment just as the grades three through ten, as they take the ACT Aspire, they will have to come to the building as well. And so I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page with that. Dr. Cummings, will you provide your input to?
Dr. Owa, may I ask, what about, because I have some emails about, what, what about students that are high-risk? So if they're high-risk and we are requiring them to come into the building, they too will still have to come into the building even after their parents have stated they are high-risk children?
Well, Dr. Cummings, Mrs. Hatter should be able to provide some options, what options, if we do have options for that situation. But I will tell you, that's one of the reasons why we were looking at some of the underutilized buildings throughout the district so that we could address any concerns that parents may have with their students who are in a virtual learning environment, as well as making sure that we continue to provide that additional physical distancing as much as possible. Dr. Cummings?
Sure. Madam Board President, Board members, and Superintendent Corr, good evening. So with regards to the options to take the test, so as Dr. Owa stated, the virtual option to test virtually is, was only for the fall and only for the winter assessments. So students who began testing after January, so starting in February, all of those tests, or the last week of January, all of those tests will be required in-person assessments. If a student is a high-risk student, say for third grade, for instance, slated to take the ACT Aspire. So currently, there is no opt-out option for testing. The parents, if the student comes to school, if they're, if they are in-person students and they come to school, they will be expected to participate in the assessments. If they are virtual students and they do not come to school to take the test, they will count against the school's ninety-five percent tested, or they will count in the ninety-five percent allotted to not test, okay? So we always talk about the ninety-five percent tested. There is a five percent that we hold for students who simply cannot take the test. So if a student is extremely high-risk, then that student may fall in that category. However, if a student is a risk, has a risk, of course, but can take the test in isolation, as Dr. Owa said, in a building, in a location where there won't be other people around, then that option will be made available to the, to the family, so that the students can test in a more then that option will be made available to the family so that the students can test in a more isolated environment, but still in the district per the, per the state, per the ADE to take the test.
And what happens right if the district doesn't, or the school building? Because each school have to achieve that ninety-five percent test rate, you know, for all of the tests to be validated. So what happens when a school building fall below that ninety-five percent? Whether it's for that reason of them not taking it or whatever the case may be?
So if they fall below the ninety-five percent, it will, as you say, it will deem them. It will hit them in their accountability. So we're all familiar with the letter grades that are given to schools. Where those letter grades are factored or calculated based on student achievement, based on growth and all those things. So the ninety-five percent tested is calculated into the achievement, into growth and all of that. So if we don't have ninety-five percent tested, then the numbers, even if all of the students test extremely well, if they don't, if we don't have ninety-five percent tested, then the students or that school won't be graded at a one-hundred percent of students testing. So they'll start out below the eight ball, you know, behind eight ball, if you will. So they will be hit through accountability. So that will include labeling the school as a school possibly needing a comprehensive support. You know, monitoring from the state, things like that. And then in turn, it will come out or play out in the district with intensive determinations.
Let me add one thing on that, Ms. Hatter, that's really critical, is that the State Department is gonna come forward with a proposal, we believe, for legislation that would put a pause on the report cards. So you gotta remember, okay, I know there's a parent community, because multiple people have, their directors have emailed us to say, we're worried about testing. Okay, I get that. But we also have to remember that testing is coming in the spring. We've got the Biden administration coming in. We've got our own Arkansas Legislative Group that's going to tackle some of this. And so there's gonna be a lot that's gonna play out over the next month and we're gonna have to keep you up to date on it. But I just wanted you to understand, I don't know if we want to get too far stuck on this one topic and not use some time on some other things. I say that with respect, Ms. Hatter. Thank you.
No, no, go ahead. Then I'll close it out with the last words. Go ahead.
As to what Mr. Pore was saying, and I think that there's very good clarification here. Many of the emails that I have received about testing were specifically about the winter testing that is occurring this week, that is coming up. And so my understanding, can we accurately tell the parents who are reaching out to us who are concerned? These are mostly virtual parents who've chosen virtual, who are not comfortable sending their students in right now. We have to deal with what happens in the spring and that will come. But right now, this is optional for them as far as the winter testing. Is that accurate, Dr. Owa?
That, I didn't hear the last part. You're asking if they have the option, if it's still optional for them? Yes, it's, from the district stance, it's still optional for the students to have to come in. My recommendation for parents who are concerned, to please reach out to their school principal and talk with the school principal and let them know what their concerns are. Because the only requirement from the state level, the federal level and the district level is that the spring assessments are in person.
I need to jump in too. So let me just share. What we, we're in the, getting in an accountability discussion and we're losing sight of the purpose of assessment. So remember, the value of the assessment is to be able to see where kids are at this given time and especially where there's some of them have had challenges, either with in-person or virtual learning. That's the value of the assessments. And that's why it's our obligation to do everything we can to get parents in for the assessment in the fall and the winter. And then, of course, in the spring, it's a little bit different beast. But, you know, we can't lose sight, there is value in the assessment. And I know some people want to argue on that, but that is really the biggest reason why we do any form of assessment.
If I might say something, just to clarify, when we say that it's an option, it is not an option to not take it, it is an option to take it at home. Okay, so, so let's, to just be clear for anyone listening, that virtual students currently for K two testing have the option to take it at home versus coming in during this winter assessment window. So the option to not take it is not on the table, but the option to take it at home is.
That is exactly, exactly what I was hoping to get to. And I'll just be transparent, my child is virtual. We are taking this assessment at home. I understand the value of that assessment. But I've heard from several parents who were told to bring their children in to school. And so I just wanted to them a clear answer about whether they had to bring their children into school this week for testing or if they could take it at home. And that's, that was really what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Director Adams, well, before I come to you, Director. So to be clear, because this is a conversation I had earlier today. It was, it's my understanding that like the district passed the option of virtual taking, for those who are taking the NWE to do it virtual or in person. And that was passed down to the school level to decide which one they will do. I just heard Mrs. Cummings say they have the either-or option. So I have parents in my inbox saying that their building principal is telling them they have to come in, in person. So there, there is some level of confusion going on. And so I'm gonna direct that back over to Mr. Pore in hopes that that confusion is able to be cleared up for the winter testing that, that people are, that parents are taking for K two. Miss Director, gotcha. Thank you. Director Adams, you are recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Hatter. I don't know, we need to move on, but before we leave that accountability picture or question, I just wanted to make really clear, when we're talking about the ninety-five percent expectation, you know, in the spring, if we have a fail, if we had a failure to meet that, would that have any connection at all to our progress and in needing to meet the exit criteria?
Mr. Adams, thank you for that question. And to answer your question, no, currently, the assessment data is not directly linked to the LRSD exit plan that was drafted by the Department of Ed.
There's a lot of reasons we need to meet that ninety-five percent goal, but that is not one of them.
Right, that's correct.
Thank you for that confirmation. Thank you.
Ms. Hatter, you're muted.
Hello. Okay, I was saying, I'm looking at the board to see if there's any other comments on that. I think at some point, we'll probably need to come back and have testing as a agenda item so we could talk about this. And we'll definitely will, because this will continue to be another topic of discussion. So moving on, we are just about at the end of our work session. And public comment, Mr. Pore? Did we receive any public comment, which is different? I'm sorry, Mr. Pore, I do want to say this. Typically, work sessions do not have public comment. However, the public comment was added because COVID nineteen and just our situation that we're in. It's a very polarizing topic and it's a very important topic. And so we wanted to extend a timeframe for public comment. So, Mr. Pore?
Thank you, Ms. Hatter. And we did not receive any patrons that asked for time for public comment. I do want to share with the board members, we use our typical mechanisms to shoot that out as a, you know, the ability to participate. We just didn't get anyone this evening. I, obviously, you all are receiving comments, though, as you've shared in your, in your evening in terms of citizens. And appreciate how you've reached out to us to answer some of those questions or to help guide parents to where they need to be. So thank you, but there is no public comment this evening. You're on mute again, Ms. Hatter.
Sorry, I've been practicing new thing because I live in Atlanta Zoom. I do have a question about, and this is to you, Mr. Pore, and it could be, it's really quick. When staff work remotely and they're able to do that, do their administrator have to put in leave or code it as they're working remotely? And then like if the administrator, if that is the case, if the administrator miscodes or forgets, it's, will the staff be charged leave? It's just a very generic, broad question.
And I don't know whether Mr. Robinson or Ms. Eason can address that question. If not, we can reply back to you.
I'm here, Mr. Pore. This is Ms. Eason. To answer that question, when the first step in working from home is the administrator will request for the approval in once an employee is approved to work from home. No leave is entered for the employee, so no sick leave or any type of leave. If a substitute is needed, the administrator and/or the WILSA building manager for that building will enter in an extra help building account sub so that in-person students are attended to by substitute. There are occasions when an employee will be directed to quarantine or isolate and it may take the principal a little bit of time before they request a work-from-home approval. And so initially, an employee's leave is entered as sick leave, pending approval for a paid COVID leave or pending approval to work from home. But as soon as we do have that request and we approve for the employee to work from home, then most certainly, we ensure through the payroll department and with the building manager that that leave is not counted against the employee and we get that removed.
Okay, thank you for asking. I mean, for saying that, that was my follow-up question. Is, is have any staff members fallen through the cracks because of that? So, I'm sorry, let me look at the. All right, so next we have our board development on the LRSD survey.
Let me just share a little bit of how Ms. Hatter and I talked about this. You know, one form of, it's really worked well, especially during the pandemic, is for us to reach out to parents. We've had extraordinary response from parents every time we've shot out a survey. And I don't know whether now is the right time to generate another survey. And certainly with all the conversation we had tonight, you all may have some thoughts either that you want to share right now and say, hey, I want to plant this seed right now. Or you could just say, I want to give this a thought. If you got information into us, you know, over the course of the next week, we could capture that and then, and kind of put together another survey on some things that you all might like as data points coming from the community and making sure that we reach out to everybody. So, you know, on the one side, we can make this pretty quick and you all could say, like that idea. Let me think about it and I'm gonna respond. But I also know, Ms. Hatter and I talked initially, that there may be some comments that you want to share right now. And it's up to you. So, Ms. Hatter, I turn it back to you now.
Here, I was, okay. So, excuse me, I was answering an email. So back to the board, it's open for a discussion. Would you guys like to reach out to your constituents, have, or do a survey based on what Mr. Pore just said? Either way, there's something that is being thrown out to you guys.
Are we talking about specifically related to the topics we've discussed tonight? And, you know, this meeting was specifically about responses to COVID nineteen, or is this broader than that?
It is around COVID nineteen, so directly. So, and so what we want to do, we want to get parents direct responses from parents of the LRSD. So that is how the survey came up. We could do this either by contacting our PTA councils, directly talking with our constituents. I mean, there is a great way of getting the survey out in conjunction to how the district send out their surveys. And so like this survey is coming out from the board.
President Hatter?
Yes, Ms. Director Mason.
I just, I do feel the need, I have some parents in my area that are asking questions about the COVID nineteen. Some, I have some parents that are, have their children that have been virtual all year. And some, their students, some of their children are not doing very well. And they're, they're a little frustrated about their students falling behind. So I think, you know, whatever survey that needs to go out to our parents or constituents, it needs to go out. And it needs to go out through any, through the district and through our PTAs. Whatever, whatever form it needs to go out, it does need to go out.
Do we have any other discussion? It seems like it's a pause. I think maybe members, the directors are thinking about, about this. And so with that, we, of course, we're coming back together on the fourteenth, so do not feel like you have to respond right now. Director Adams, you're recognized.
Well, if we were gonna do a survey, and I think it could be useful, it would be interesting to me to, if we could hear from parents, you know, their perspective of what they think is going really well with the district's response. And, you know, where they feel good about it and wherever, whatever setting they're, that they're in. And also what areas they feel like are, you know, could be improved or that concern them and worry them, if it's a way we could, we could learn that. I think, to me, it would be important to learn both of those. The things where it looks good and they feel comfortable with it and also those areas that that they feel like could be improved or that really concern them.
I agree. So what I would encourage each of you guys to do is let's share, have those conversations, even share some of our emails, our emails that are concerned from our parents regarding the response to COVID nineteen from the district. As well, as well as reach out to some of our other organizations that have direct connection. uh to some of our, our other organizations that have direct uh connection with parents, as well as our churches. Um and so we, and we really wanna make, make this as um organic as possible and very easy to read um and to answer. It's not, not to be too long, but then we are able to um come, uh compile the questions and then get it out to our parents. And is there any further discussion, because this is the last item on the agenda? And um we had it scheduled, we are actually uh just before eight-thirty, so it's eight-twenty-one. So is there any other discussion on the survey? Okay, seeing that there's, okay, Mr. Porter?
Ms. Hatter, I just wanna mention that uh tomorrow, board members, you will receive some uh additional materials, not only from the presentations tonight, but Dr. Owa also will be sharing uh some information to prepare you for Thursday's meeting on the fourteenth. And remember, we have the training sessions coming up. So uh Horace Smith and Steve Percival have provided some uh information to give to you. And uh Attorney Walker uh will have some information and, and Ms. Eason on employee hearings uh in addition to the medical information that we received tonight. So uh just understand some, you will be receiving some documents to help prepare you for Thursday. And appreciate all your time that you all are putting in. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, uh thank you guys for spending your evening uh with, with us as, as we worked through um some um, some, some very important topics around COVID and around testing. And uh please review those items. I also as uh, uh sent you guys, um, I also sent, uh, 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 sent you guys some uh financial information for you guys to review, and, and so we can be prepared for a later date to discuss that. And with that, uh you guys, good night. Uh do you guys have in, in any closing comments? That is my last question. Do you guys have any closing comments? Okay, uh Director Knowles?
Oh, I was just gonna say thank you so much to Mr. Porter, um to everybody who participated tonight. I know I was one of the directors who pushed for this meeting. For me, it has been incredibly helpful to be able to get answers. Um I really appreciate everyone who made it happen. Um and I also, I would be remiss if I didn't say this as part of this whole conversation tonight. I have continued to raise concerns about health and safety related to COVID. But I also want to make clear that many of the comments and the things that I'm hearing from parents and from teachers and from pediatricians are all concerns about needing schools to be open. And so I, I want to make sure that everyone knows that we are really listening to all of that. It's easy to get in the mode of advocating for one thing and not really grappling with the difficulties of the entire issue and the entire problem. Um and so I just want to make clear that this is not an easy topic, and that we are all getting um lots of input, and it's not as simple as, you know, just pushing for one thing. There's, there's a lot to consider here. So thank you very much.
Uh I did see another, Director Adams?
Ju- just a quick comment, since you're asking for a comment from Ms. Hatter, and thank you. Uh and this may be something that'll be de- dealt with later on, but I just, it strikes me now that, that um it, it seems to me that when we ask people to give them opportunity for a public comment, that um in general, I, I would, I wonder if it might be better to, to put that on first in the agenda? I think it'd be difficult. It seems to me, uh, it can be difficult for people to, to wait and not know when they could, when they can come in, and it may be hard for them to schedule around. So I, I know I would certainly be interested if people, if we did have public comments, to hear their comments in the beginning, so that it might help inform um our discussions as we go.
Uh yes, I will take that into note, because you know, uh we're, they are, the public and parents and everyone are is also a- able to do topic comments as well. So um definitely uh noted. I thought I seen another, a new, thank you, I appreciate you. Okay, so with that, you guys, uh thank you so much for um being along with us, knowing on this uh work session uh to cover uh all of the topics that you have uh heard us uh discuss. And, and on the fourteenth, we will come back for our agenda uh meeting to get our agenda together. And then we'll have our monthly regular meeting on the twenty-eighth. Um every, um so work sessions are something that uh we will uh continue to have. And uh we appreciate you guys for uh being involved and staying engaged. And with that, good night, and we'll see you on Thursday.